This is public comments, okay. Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission for City of Thousand Oaks on April 27th. Would you please, when you call the order first, or we just go right to the pledge? Okay, we're going right to the pledge of allegiance, would please join me for pledge, our flag. Ready, begin.
(inaudible)
Thank you very much, so the recording secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds, here. Commissioner Roundtree.
Here.
Commissioner Turpelle.
Here.
Chair Nichols.
Yes. Next, we have written comments, announcements, continuances. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one supplemental item that was sent out to the commission and the recording secretary has copies here as well with four additional comments regarding case 6A. And that, again, is available for anybody to review should they so choose. And that's all I had at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Next is our first case of the evening. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss the public, oh, I'm sorry, I missed the public comments. Here we go. Public comments, and I'm sorting through all my cards here, and so far, it looks like the only public comments I have is Mr. Nick Kidway. I think everyone else is for case 6A. So, Mr. Nick Kidway.
My name is Nick Igbal Kidway, I'm resident of Newberry Park and director of Concerned Citizens since 1992 or so, approximately. Well, there is a special election on, very soon, and I just received several copies of this, and you would think that the city is doing a great job in promoting it, but as far as I'm concerned and people are concerned, we want knowledge about the candidates as much as we can. And it costs money to mail it, and we are in the internet age. These are the candidates, three candidates' statements. Why don't we put this on the web on the cities which is proponing so much, so that people can easily read about the candidates, rather than the glossy flyers that they get? And I was in Westlake, I printed some things, but ran here, it's sitting on my desk. I was in the parking lot, and I saw the most poignant bumper sticker. It says, "America built by geniuses, run by idiots." How true it is. I mean, it's a sad state of affairs, that the best and the brightest do not want to be involved in the political process. Like to see a commissioner staring at me, thank you. You're paying attention. We have the most un-American ordinance in this city that was done in 1998 against certain people like myself, where in your own front yard, you cannot have two signs of one candidate, unless it's 100 feet apart. Go and take a measuring scale, it's 100 feet apart, it's allowed. So if you have two signs or three signs, if you're big, you know, some people are really big McCoy fans, because they're Christians, and they think that the pastor is running. I went to his church on Sunday, he gives a great sermon, and so they put out three office signs on their front yard, it's illegal. You cannot put a sign on the Thousand Oaks Boulevard in any business without the permission. Now, that's a can of worms. I mean, we are the only city, and in fact, we have, next door, half of Westlake is the city of Westlake. And if you go to Costco, which is in the LA part, during the elections, the whole median is full of signs, et cetera. But in this city, you cannot put it on a public right of space, and you have to get written permission from the owners. So, I went twice, in fact, I have a picture. I went again to Jack in the Box on Moore Park Road and talked to Elizabeth, the manager, finally. And she said, "Yeah, nobody talked to me," and I'm going to take those signs down, because corporation doesn't allow it. Again, idiots, I mean, we want to make a better city, we want to be involved, but no, corporation will not allow it. And we are, why are we so lazy? I mean, these people are putting these signs out on Thousand Oaks Boulevard in front of Chase Bank. I mean, you know, Chase Bank will not allow a political sign on Thousand Oaks Boulevard in front of their property. So, and she was quick, I went to Five Guys, they have a great burger, too many calories, sat there, and by the time I got out, the two signs, offending signs of Mr. McCoy and Mr. Roundtree were gone. So, I'm for the signs, people don't understand me, and people are upset, I mean, "Why are you the sign police?" I'm not the sign police. Get rid of this illogical, illegal, unethical ordinance, which is to help incumbents, and open the democratic process, so that more and more people are involved, so that we maintain the city and try to, we can't be the geniuses like Jefferson, but at least come up to the same level, so that countries like China and India do not overtake us, and we have good jobs, and that's what makes this possible. And to treat taxpayers' money like Disney dollars, and, I mean, one case is not enough, you should have three cases to justify holding a planning commission meeting for the costs that are involved. And let it go a little bit longer. But you should go to quarterly meetings, I mean, you don't have, I mean, the other thing is, I mean, I brought it up, and I was turned down, is that, "Well, some of these things cannot be dealt with, because they're done at the staff level." Change the rule, that's what you are, you are geniuses, change the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Just as a point of order, if there's anybody else who cares to speak on something that is not on the agenda, if you please submit a card to the recording secretary, that was the only card that I had. If everyone else is here to speak on item 6A, I do have a number of cards, if there's anyone else, please make sure that card is submitted as well. Anyone else care to speak on public comments? Any items that are not on the agenda? Okay, if you please submit a card to the recording secretary. I'm sorry. You returned a speaker card? Okay, I have Penny Spristler, it says for item 6A, which is on the agenda. Were you here to speak on the case 6A tonight? Okay, I can't have an open dialogue here, I just need to clarify if you were wanting to just have a general comment on something not on the agenda tonight, or if you wanted to speak to the agenda item. If it's just a general public comment, you're welcome to come to the dais, but it can't be anything that we're discussing tonight, for example, item 6A. Okay, why don't you come to the dais, go ahead and explain, if you give me your name and city residence, and the topic you want to discuss, and I'll just make note here that it was not to do with item 6A.
My name is Penny Spristler, I live at 300 McLeod Avenue, here in Thousand Oaks, in the senior community of Oak Knoll. A year ago in March, a developer by the name of Brian Hunter of Hunter Development Company, located in Irvine, California, came to a board meeting for our homeowners association. He gave a presentation regarding a proposed project of an assisted living facility across the street from Oak Knoll at 250 McLeod. At that time, I suppose the impression seemed to be that the residents were in favor of this project, because there were no questions asked of Mr. Hunter. Actually, people were so stunned as to the size of the building project, there was so much information to process, no one knew what to ask. So there were visits to City Hall, questions were asked, city documents were read, and meetings of the Planning Commission and City Council were attended. Residents gave speeches, wrote letters to the editor for the Acorn and the Ventura County Star newspapers. A letter-writing campaign was started, and a petition was circulated. There was so much opposition, that due to the number of objections and concerns, we received a letter from the community development director, Mr. John Prescott, to keep us informed of the current project's status and informing us of how the application process was to proceed. That letter was dated June 4th, 2014. That project, for one reason or another, had not been processed so far, due to incompletion for the past few months. Now, last Tuesday, April 21st, there was a board meeting for our homeowners association, and Brian Hunter was invited to be our guest speaker by the Board of Directors. He was invited to give us an update as to the current status of his project. Why the Planning Commission office was not called for this update, we don't know. At any rate, Brian Hunter of Hunter Development Company said that at 5:00 PM, he had received a call that day from someone here at City Hall, stating that the project had been accepted and the city's surveys were completed. The next day, City Hall was contacted, and yes, the project was moving forward, and all the city's surveys had been completed. The first report would be online this coming Wednesday. Last Friday, the public notification sign was posted, and we received a letter in the mail, in line with procedures. In Mr. Prescott's letter, it is stated that residents will have the opportunity to review the submitted plans at that point. The next sentence says that city staff will begin its formal review of the application, including environmental review and review for consistency with city policies and standards. Then it says in that letter, "This will take several months at least." Then it is stated that the review will result in reports that will be prepared for the Planning Commission and City Council to use in its public hearings on the project. All that being said, my question is, have all these reviews and studies been completed in this short time, when Mr. Prescott specifically stated that this would take several months at least? I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spristler.
Would I be receiving a letter to that effect, or would you be able to answer me, or how does that work?
I'm going to ask Mr. Town if he could perhaps address what the current situation is with the project.
Thank you, Chair Nichols. The project that the speaker refers to is the Hunter Assisted Living Project on McLeod Avenue.
Yes.
That project was accepted as complete relatively recently, and staff has been working on the environmental document for that project. That's the very first step in basically the analysis, that will be released this Wednesday for public review, it'll be posted on the city's website, and identifies all of the project characteristics, et cetera. The sign that recently went up is the very first step in the notification process, that is a notice of basically application, telling the community what is being proposed. And we have not yet scheduled a hearing before this body, but that project will need to come before this body for a recommendation, and then it will be decided ultimately by the City Council. And obviously, that hearing has not been scheduled either. For the Planning Commission and the City Council meetings, there will be staff reports prepared to augment the environmental analysis that will go into the project in some detail. So, this is relatively early in the process, but the environmental document, I would certainly encourage you to take a look at, it will be, like I said, available this Wednesday. It will be available online, and we have limited hard copies here at City Hall for review as well.
Just my impression was that everything was all said and done, and that it was all accepted, and that the city was just pushing it through, so that's why I'm here, just to ask about it.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, but as Mr. Town explained, it is going through the standard process.
Thank you.
Now, I also have a card from Joseph Spristler, is also listed for item 6A, but you're probably here for public comments, I presume. As it says here, you had some other concerns. So, Mr. Spristler, if you'd just give us your name and city residence for the record, please.
My name is Joe Spristler, I live in the senior community of Oak Knoll, located at 300 McLeod Avenue in Thousand Oaks. The proposed project of an assisted living facility to be built at 250 McLeod has come before the Planning Commission. According to the city's procedure, a sign has been posted on that property to give notice that a public hearing will be held in the future, no date has been specified. It is also my understanding that the public notification should be in a location where the majority of the people affected by this project, namely the Oak Knoll residents, can see the sign. The placement of this sign is presently located, does not offer maximum coverage or information to the people living in Oak Knoll, or those living in Lynn-Villas. Many of our residents work, they come out of Oak Knoll, turn right, travel to the 101 at Lynn, and they don't see the sign. One of the things I'm saying about the sign, if you stand at the entrance of Oak Knoll, you cannot see the sign, you don't notice the sign there, okay? Placing of the sign in a more central location would help correct this issue. There's also a safety issue, and this is really a problem. Where the sign is located, seniors crossing the street from the Oak Knoll side have a difficult time seeing oncoming vehicles coming down the street until they're almost on top of them. This is because the street curves to the left, a little ways up the street, which, okay, this makes it hard for both the seniors and the vehicle drivers to see each other, because of the blind spot created by the situation, and someone could get hurt. The attached sketch will illustrate this problem. In addition, the more cars that park on the Oak Knoll side of the street location, the bigger the, I'm going to say it again, in addition, the more cars that park on the Oak Knoll side above the sign location, the bigger the blind spot gets. It is also on the sign side of the road now, the ground between the sidewalk and the street itself is extremely rough, there's big gouges in it, like it's been trenched out, making it hard for seniors to get onto the sidewalk after crossing the street. Because of the safety concern regarding the placement of the notification sign, I am requesting that the city send out a safety or traffic engineer to take a look at the sign's location before somebody gets hurt. Also, I am sure that the city would want the notification read by as many people as possible, so that they may attend the public hearing, to give their concerns, and to hear their concerns and opinions. You got this because of the sketch, and for first place, can you understand what the sketch says? You know, McLeod is a typical place, street to cross, almost every place, you know, and it's tough getting across, that particular spot is really bad. Now, I marked a spot on, I got out of Walk Department, I found a spot on the ground that was fairly level, it slopes up, it's a fairly level spot, and it can be seen from the entrance, you can see that there's a sign there, as opposed to, you can't see a sign. And that's why I made the sketch, and I think the safety issue is the biggest concern, because it's tough getting across the street. Remember, we're seniors, and it's rough. That's all I've got to say, and I want to thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Spristler, appreciate your comments.
Any questions?
I know the city staff tries to choose strategic locations for
Any questions?
...notifications. Any questions for staff? No, I guess not, thank you very much for your presentation.
Okay, thank you for hearing me.
Okay, I'll recover written comments, so will the recording secretary please call agenda item 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6A regarding case RPMJ 2014-70518 and OTP 2015-70003. Applicant Houla Lee Holding Trust requests to allow construction of an eight-foot-high masonry wall along the rear property line adjacent to Westlake Boulevard, and allow encroachment within protected zone of six oak trees and removal of one oak tree. Location 1764 and 1757 Classic Rose Court.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And Mr. Chang, I believe you have the staff report for us this evening.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Nichols and members of the commission. If you can turn your attention to the screen in front of you. And for your consideration tonight, residential plan development, major modification, and oak tree permit application have been filed, and the request is to allow the construction of a masonry wall to the rear of the two property located at 1757 and 1764 Classic Rose Court, and rear property lies adjacent to Westlake Boulevard, and is kind of parallel to the Westlake Boulevard Street. And for the oak tree permit request, the oak tree permit request is to remove one oak tree, and encroach into the protected zone of six oak tree to accommodate the proposed masonry wall. And staff like to provide a little vicinity map of where this project is, and the project's located within the North Ranch area, very close to the, back up to Westlake Boulevard, but very close to Canaan Row intersection. And this track's located at the track 4297, almost to the corner of Westlake Boulevard and Canaan Row. And along Westlake Boulevard, there are several other tracks were developed earlier, prior to this development. So for this particular vicinity map, staff would like to provide a little overview or vicinity perspective of where this project is. And for this particular slide, showing where the proposed wall in consideration to the existing properties, as well as the Westlake Boulevard street frontage. And as you can see from this picture, that the property is very close to the intersection of Canaan and Westlake Boulevard. And the proposed block wall is going to be parallel to Westlake Boulevard, to the rear of the properties. And for the existing house, you can see the picture, that's one that's been developed. And the one to the south is a vacant lot, they do have an approved entitlement to have a single-family house there, but at this point, the lot's still currently vacant, and both property are under the same ownership. And staff would like to provide some background information to this particular project. And back in 1986, the track development and RPD development was approved by the Planning Commission for this particular track, and also the residential development for the houses. And back in 2003, PPD 2002-94 was approved for the two-story homes, the one that you see on the picture, that was approved. And the house was constructed around 2003 or 2004. And in 2013, another PPD application was approved for the custom single-family house on the vacant lot, but the vacant lot, the lot's still currently undeveloped, it's been graded, but the lot's still vacant at this point. And for the existing condition along the rear of the property, one of the lot has split rail fencing, and the one with the house on it has a split rail fencing, also wrought iron fencing, that's kind of parallel to the Westlake Boulevard. And staff will provide some pictures later, also provide a better perspective. And this is a picture standing from across the street, across from Westlake Boulevard, looking at existing conditions. You can see some existing vegetations, and if you can see the split rail fencing, the brown split rail fencing, and also the black wrought iron fencing behind it. And what the applicant is proposing to do is remove the wrought iron fencing, and probably the majority of the landscaping vegetation, to put the six-foot-high block wall. And this is a closed-up look, this looking on Westlake Boulevard side, looking north of the property. And this is standing where the vacant lot is, which at this point, is only the split rail fencing, there's no wrought iron. And you can see the trail path, the split rail fence, as well as the existing vegetation. This is a picture standing on the two-story house side, looking down south on Westlake Boulevard, looking southward. And you can see the existing condition with the split rail fencing, the wrought iron, and also vegetation along the wrought iron fencing. And this picture is actually taken from the applicant's side of the slope, looking at the existing condition from a different perspective. So this is the lower side, on the slope side, from the applicant's perspective, looking at the existing trees along Westlake Boulevard. And there's another picture looking at, from applicant's property, looking at the existing slope, and the driveway, and the retaining walls next to the existing two-story house. And you can see from this picture, there's a lot of vegetations. And applicant did state that it is their intention that all this construction access will be accessed from the bottom of the slope, which is from this perspective, during construction. And this picture is provided more like closed-up, looking at what's inside the landscaping. You can see some of the trees, and also the wrought iron fencing kind of in the background. And it is staff's opinion that if the project's approved, pretty much the majority of the landscaping probably will be removed to accommodate the proposed block wall. And for the project design, the applicant is requesting to remove the existing wrought iron fencing, Lot 30, from one of the pictures as you've seen. And, but however, the applicant will retain or keep the split rail fencing that's currently right next to the trail path. And the new wall will be about six feet visible from Westlake Boulevard side, but the overall height will be seven feet and 10 inches. And the overall length of the wall will be almost close to 500 feet. The location of the wall will be three feet behind existing split rail fence. And the material of the block wall will be split-faced block with stone veneer columns. And as for the landscaping, it is staff's opinion that the majority of landscaping will be removed to accommodate the footing of the wall, and also the wall itself, including one oak tree, which is oak tree number 100, as this is your staff report. And the applicant's landscape architect has proposed a one-gallon landscaping shrub to use as a screening to cover the wall if the project is approved. And this is a site plan, and the northbound's actually to your left, looking at the existing house, which is on the left where the shape is, and also on the right-hand side is the vacant lot. And the wall will be kind of parallel to Westlake Boulevard, it can kind of turn. And this is the proposed cross-section, and can show you the car, the walking path, and also the house in relation to the slope. And in the middle will be the six-foot-high wall as visible from Westlake Boulevard, but on the other side, which is the applicant's side, will be seven feet and 10 inches. So, that's why staff mentioned about the overall height So that's why staff mentioned about the overall height will be seven feet and 10 inches, because staff, we do measure the wall from the lower point, which is be seven feet and 10 inches. But the actual visibility will be six feet from Westlake Boulevard. And what the applicant proposes to do is remove the wrought iron fencing in the middle, but put the six-foot-high wall about three feet behind it. And in between the split rail fencing and the block wall is going to be a one-gallon landscaping shrub. As for the oak tree permit application, the subject requests ask for one oak tree to be removed to accommodate the wall. And also six other oak tree will be encroached within the protected zone for the footings, for the construction access. And City's landscape consultant has reviewed this application, and our landscape consultant does not think the actual construction will have a negative impact to the subject oak trees. And Westlake Boulevard is part of a city sitting highway, as defined the sitting highway elements of the Thousand Oaks General Plan. And back in 1986, when staff originally review and also present the project to the planning commission, staff mentioned the importance of a sitting highway, and also the importance of Westlake Boulevard as a sitting highway. And a special treatment also should be, pay attention to the Westlake Boulevard. And therefore, this is one of the conditions, condition number F-1 of RPD require a consistent perimeter fencing around this particular track, which this condition has, is very similar to other tracks within North Ranch area. Staff would like to go back to the previous vicinity map. You can see the subject property is located at Track 4297, but along the east side of Westlake Boulevard, there are other, two other tracks, Track 3917 as well as 2343. And they all, they were approved earlier than the track, subject track was 4297. They were approved in the early, late 1970s and early 1980s. And when we approved the track, we also imposed a similar condition, require a consistent perimeter fencing. So therefore, when we, when the planning commission reviewed Track 4297, they required the applicant or the developer to have the, to provide the same consistent treatment along Westlake Boulevard. As the staff mentioned before, consistent perimeter fencing, it is a requirement, as also a condition, to the developers. And while we have existing fencing treatments, some residents has a split rail. And most, we do have split rail along Westlake Boulevard, but some residents has wrought iron fencing, and some residents has a berm or no other treatments. And what intent is to provide a semi-rural design, which have a more like openness, so we don't see a block wall along Westlake Boulevard. And they want to create, North Ranch is a semi-rural character for the community. And so staff provide findings and also explanation on staff's reason for not supporting the project. And one of the first finding is this project is contradict to the sitting highways element of the Thousand Oaks General Plan, because the proposed wall is not compatible with the existing condition of semi-rural design. And the second item is the project is inconsistent with the conditions, which is condition number F-1, staff mentioning in the staff report. And the proposed design is inconsistent with the overall design that was approved for this particular track. Item number three, staff mentioned earlier that the North Ranch was approved, was a semi-rural community with more sense of openness and more natural surroundings. And therefore, this project will not maintain a semi-rural design as envisioned for this particular area. And fourth item is there is no special circumstances or condition apply that allow the approval of this development. Because along Westlake Boulevard, there are other houses building to Westlake Boulevard. Some people have a berm, some people have wrought iron fencing. So for this particular, for this particular two properties, they don't have any special circumstances or special condition that allow the approval of the wall. As for the oak tree evaluations, staff mentioned already that City Oak Tree Consultant reviewed the oak tree request. And however, staff does not support the oak tree permit request because, reason number one, this property currently has reasonable conforming use. So the proposed wall, the property has reasonable conforming use without the proposed wall. And second item is the oak tree request is contrary to the intent of oak tree preservation and protection guidelines. As for the environmental review, this project is exempt from C-class three exemptions, because the project is considered as accessory structure. And at the end, staff is recommending the planning commission to deny the residential major modification and the oak tree permit application based on the findings contained in the staff report. And however, if commission decide to approve this particular project, staff has attached a set of the conditions that planning commission could use if planning commission decide to approve this project. And any findings to support the motion will need to be generated or prepared based on the comments by all the commissioners. And staff would like to also introduce Richard Campbell as our City's landscape consultant. So if commission has any question regarding landscaping, we do have Richard Campbell here to address any oak tree or landscaping questions. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chang. Commissioners, those with questions, I think first, Commissioner Newell over here, Newman asked for permission, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good evening, Mr. Chang. Thank you for your presentation. I'd like to begin with a couple of terminology questions regarding RPD 86-377, conditions F-1 and F-2. Those state in part that along the perimeter is requirement for a uniform wall or fence treatment that shall be established for all lots. So I just want to be sure that I'm reading this as the city is interpreting it. Uniform means there is the same fence treatment for all lots within the track. Is that correct?
What the condition intent is to have, not necessarily every law has the same fencing as some, because of topography issues. So what intention is there should be a set of fencing that's approved, for example, wrought iron or split rail, just a kind of a choice of the fencing material that could be used within the perimeter, within the track itself.
I understand about approval. I actually have another question about approval. But just the word "uniform," to me, it denotes, or connotes, a similar style, at least, or similar materials, or in some way, some form of similarity from lot to lot. Is that, is that also the city's interpretation of that requirement?
Yes. Whether perimeter, wall moving by perimeter is kind of around the edges or along the major street, or street frontage, where it's visible from public. So in that case, we do require consistent fencing. In this case, we do have the split rail, and a lot of the houses, they do have wrought iron. And in this case, one of the lot doesn't have wrought iron because it's under, it's vacant, it's underdeveloped.
Yes.
So when we build, or when the developers building a house, then as part of the construction will require to put the wrought iron as part of the construction.
Because of this uniform requirement?
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, the other word there that jumped out was "all lots," meaning there can't be a wrought iron treatment behind the split rail fence for one lot, and then a different kind of fence in another lot. Is that, is that also the city's interpretation?
Your correct, yes.
All right, thank you. And then I, just again, to clarify on approval process, both conditions F-1 and F-2 state that the fence designs, or the fences, shall be subject to the Director of Planning and Community Development's review and approval. Both conditions F-1 and F-2, is that, is that also your understanding?
Yes. So when staff initially present the project to the planning commission, we impose a set of the conditions. And what planning commission did is kind of give staff kind of direction, what they like to see. But the actual design of the project is very similar to a lot of cases that work on them. Planning commission will give us direction, but staff were actually working with the applicant or developer. Come out was the design that actually meet the intent, in which this case, the split rail and wrought iron meet the intent of the planning commission.
All right, thank you. My final question is regarding the application itself, this is on page 20 of the packet. I think it's part of the application itself. Yeah, on page 20, in section five of the major modification application, it states in all capital letters, "No clear ban on walls." And the paragraph under that cites the language of condition F-2 as justification. And my question is, does condition F-2 take precedence over or contradict in some way the language of condition F-1, which says there should be a uniform wall and it should be on all lots? Is there a contradiction there?
There's no contradiction. What the condition did is kind of provide a kind of overall guidelines for what a developer needs to do based on the comments from the commissioner at that time, back in 1986, which at that time, staff and also planning commission did acknowledge Westlake Boulevard as a sitting highway, the importance of landscaping treatment, also a sense of openness. And so what the condition did is provide kind of general guidelines, but the actual specific designs up to the staff working with the developer come was a set of approval design materials or selection that could be used. In this case, they're not, they're not contradicting it.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. And thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Commissioner Turpil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chang, you, the staff once again did an incredible job. I have just some very simple questions. There is a level of decibel setting in the city that we consider acceptable, is that correct?
Based on, based on noise element of Thousand Oaks General Plan, we do have a kind of table showing the decibels or noise element, but it's more like a different levels, yes.
For different areas of the city?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was looking at this, and I saw the, a letter from the applicant in our packet that talks about 65 dB is unacceptable. I didn't see any response for that from the city, and I probably should have called before I came in. But there was a note, let me get to it if I could, that with the sound wall in place, it's going to drop apparently with their study four decibels, which is about 25 percent. Am I reading that correctly? Is that what they're saying? And I'm sorry, this would have been, it's a letter from McKay, maybe it's a question for the applicant, but is it 28? Yes, you're right, page 28. It talks about reveal the noise levels at the receiver would drop by four dB compared with the berm.
Yeah, the applicant did provide a sound study, however, the sound study itself did not provide the original or the actual sound, how many dBs. It is mentioned about reduced, drop by four dB to build the wall. So it doesn't have like front or two from what's the?
From what is that?
Before, yes.
Okay, that was my question, and thank you for answering that. Mr. Campbell, this may be for you. Well, let me just throw this out, there were no, obviously, it's not in our packet, so there are no type of renderings as to what this wall would actually look like that was included with us, you know, after the wall was completed? It did? Well, I missed that. Well, I can, we can, I can take a look at that in a second. If it's there, I'll look at it. Mr. Campbell, when they, the type of trees, the shrubs that they're talking about placing in front of this wall to mitigate the landscaping, how long before those mature and how high do they get?
I've found that this particular plant probably takes five years, four years from a one-gallon. It's relatively fast, but you know, you're talking about six feet high, the one-gallon plant's probably a foot and a half to two feet. The applicant's landscape architect has worked with this plant more than I have, so you can ask him that question.
Okay, all right. But that answers my question. I was, I was talking about the renderings as a photo op, not, not a plan. I was talking about, you know, how sometimes we get, photosim, photosim, yeah, but, and we didn't have one of those in this packet.
If I could just interject, there is one image on Exhibit A1 that shows a photo simulation prepared by the applicant for the proposed wall. It's, it's not your traditional full-size photosim, it's, it's one sort of image on Exhibit A1, which is a side plan.
My question was, there wasn't one right after the wall was built. This is after the landscaping has grown up, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
So this is, okay. Let me have a question for their landscape architect on that. That's, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Turpil. Commissioner Reynolds, did you have some questions for staff?
My questions were the same as Commissioner Turpil, the dB levels, I was curious with that. So they've been answered.
Commissioner Roundtree.
Mr. Chang, is it normal when an applicant comes to the city that you work with them as to other mitigation measures as opposed to a wall, when you're seeing a potential issue? Has he gone through, or has the family gone through an exhaustive list of other things that could help reduce the sound issue? Or is it, you simply take the application and tell me what that dialogue sounds like?
Yeah, as staff mentioned in my, in our staff report, back in, I believe it was 2012, the applicant initially contacted the city staff, Public Works Department about the traffic and noise issue. And also, he also contacted our community development department. And we did suggest other methods to address, whether it be privacy or noise issues. So there could be other issues, maybe a cheaper methods to maybe for the insulation, so use different type of windows to address some of the issues. And also, of course, use landscaping, as you can see on Westlake Boulevard, there's so many other landscaping treatment that you can do to provide as a privacy buffer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Mr. Chang, what is the minimum setback for homes along Westlake Boulevard and those considered, is there a distinction because it's Westlake Boulevard, or is it just a rear property setback? How's that determined for these lots?
For the building itself, for the building, what staff and I, dwelling, the house, the setback needs to be more because staff, based on staff recollections, about what, 25 feet, and some could be nearer. But for the building itself, they need to provide more setback, because Westlake Boulevard is a sitting highway, and they intend to keep, keep an open, sense of openness, have the building away from the Boulevard, so it can just enjoy the vista and doing the landscaping. And for the wall itself, the wall, we do allow wall along the rear property line, so there's no setback requirement if it's just a wall. But in this particular case, since this is Westlake Boulevard, and we do have a specific design criteria for all the treatments, landscaping or fencing treatment along Westlake Boulevard. And that's why in this case, the staff is not recommending the wall as a, not because of a setback requirement, it's more because the sitting highway knows those are conditioned from the original development.
I was doing some rough scaling, and I think the house is setback about 50 feet from the property line. Does that sound about right?
Staff doesn't really measure it, so.
Okay, I'll just go with my rough estimate then.
I think that is accurate. It's, I believe it's about 60 feet, 58 to 60 feet.
Okay.
Back from the right away.
Okay, thank you. That was the only additional question I had everyone kind of. That was the only additional question I had, everyone kinda chimed in on some of the comments that, any other commissioner questions for staff? Okay. If not, then I'm going to move to our speakers. Just for a little housekeeping here, we have a number of cards, I have three cards for the applicant, that's Mr. Mark Sellers, Mr. James Dean, and Mr. Andy Myers. The three of you will have a tag team of 15 minutes, I'll let you sort amongst yourselves how that's gonna be divided. And then I also have an opposition from, regarding the Westlake North Homewares Board, Mr. Tom Oswal is gonna be representing, so he also will get 15 minutes. And then I have an additional seven cards, so the remaining seven speakers then will have four minutes each, okay? So, hope that's clear for everybody. And when we're all through, we may have a couple of questions for you folks, and we'll have a rebuttal then by the applicant of five minutes. So, Mr. Reynolds.
I just wanted to make a statement before Mr. Sellers comes forward. He has been my personal attorney on property that I have in Laguna Beach, and because of that, I don't feel that I will have any problem making an independent decision on this case, so...
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Okay, that, with that, Mr. Mark Sellers, if you would kindly introduce yourself, name and city residence for the record, please.
Mark Sellers, city residence is City of Thousand Oaks. I'm with the Jackson DeMarco Law Firm, and here on behalf of the applicant. I find it very interesting and revealing to note that when this project was originally approved back in the 1980s, that the Public Works Department had recommended a sound wall for this very piece of property. Why? Because they knew this was a major city street and that traffic was gonna increase. I just emailed our sound expert, he says the model shows that right now, the decibel level right at their house is 71 dB. So, then they recognized that there was gonna be a potential problem, and today we are back before you to ask you to fix that problem. But that situation is more than just sound. We are also dealing with an issue, and we have in the packet a report from a structural engineer, that there is a concern about more traffic, more accidents, and vehicles coming down the slope into their yard. And we aren't making this up. James Dean will talk about a situation where he was involved with and personally knows of, where a neighbor had a vehicle come down from Westlake Boulevard and ended up in their pool. So this is more than a sound issue, it's also a safety issue to try to keep cars up on Westlake Boulevard that get in accidents. We could ask the city to put in K rails or garden rails. Uh, I don't think that's what anybody wants to see on this segment of the Boulevard. I think that'd be very displeasing in the visual aspect. Again, we are in a situation that it's a city street that's generating this concern, and we basically have two goals in line. And that, when generally you weigh safety with aesthetics, it's generally my belief safety should rule out. When it comes to aesthetics, and Mr. Dean will go in this in great details, we are setting the wall back three feet, we are going to plan it within, he tells me, within a year, a little over a year, this wall is gonna be completely covered and you won't even be able to see it. So we're talking about some very drought tolerant, rapid growing, screening plant that be planted in front of this wall that in a year and a half, you probably won't even notice it when you're going 60 miles an hour, whatever they travel on this road. And I understand that the, now the present daily trips are like 17,000, trips up and down that road. Uh, the speeding is always an issue on that road. So the real concern here is to try to deal with something that's changed drastically from the 1980s and put something in that makes their home enjoyable. The, the Myers even told me, one of their neighbors moved out of their house because the noise became intolerable from Westlake Boulevard, and now they're renting the property out. It was... I've also noted that, and I don't know how well this shows up... Right here? Oh, it's not gonna... All right. All right. This is a wall that's at Crest Haven on Westlake Boulevard. This is a short distance away from the Myers' home. This is on the west side of Westlake Boulevard. It's a wall that probably will end up being the same distance from the street as the Myers are proposing their wall. So again, for consistency, there are walls along Westlake Boulevard in the area. In fact, even, we noticed the homeowners association's community center has a wall in front of that. So we're basically trying to get some fairness and consistency and uniformity. Uh, what is approved tonight with the wall creates a uniform treatment for walls along Westlake Boulevard. We, frankly, if you've got a different concept of how the wall should look, a different material that to cover the wall, we're quite willing to use that. We use what we thought was the most visually appealing. Again, this is a wall that is gonna be seen after the, the plantings grow up, but then we get into uniform treatment with fencing. That's what we're seeing on Westlake Boulevard right now. We're seeing fencing that isn't open, fencing that doesn't give a rural atmosphere. We have these tarps or coverings on, on most of the, the fences along Westlake Boulevard. And a lot of them are different colors, a lot of them, some of them are in disrepair and torn. And as you can see, I've got, one is sort of a gray.
Mr. Sellers, can you turn your picture? Everything you're getting, we're getting upside down, I can't even see the... Thank you. There you go.
For example, this is a gray material. Different kind of material, a different style of wrought iron fence. Some different colored canvassing or covering, and again, fences that, to me, are far less, are more displeasing and unattractive than what we're proposing here today with the wall. And I think, as Mr. Dean will show you, that in a few, a year, year and a half, you're not even gonna be able to see this wall or notice this wall. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Dean to go over the applicant, the, the design concept, unless there's any questions.
While we go ahead and get your presentation, we can follow up with questions at that point. Mr. Dean, if you could give your name and residence, please.
James Dean, landscape architect. I have the privilege of having been the original landscape architect for North Ranch about 39 years ago. And I can tell you that, um, the planting that has occurred all along the Boulevard was not part of the potential plan, was all homeowner created, mainly, my belief is mainly for security, visual security reasons. The wrought iron fences were part of the CCNRs that, and the homeowners association that was required, and I participated in that, those decisions also. What was not considered was an iron rust. We're now 39 years into the worst, or 35 years into the worst lots, into the furthest one south, and rust is occurring, and it won't be long, probably another two, three, four years, those fences are gonna have to be replaced. There was no consideration of that. At the time, Westlake Boulevard did not go through, it was blocked off. Later on, it was made a thoroughfare and the traffic has been quite prolific. Being out on the site, um, on the lower part of the site is, is really quite annoying. I'm going to go quickly through this, if you'll excuse me, I have eye problems, so I'm gonna have to read this a little bit. But the Westlake Boulevard is certainly a beautiful, beautifully landscaped thoroughfare. Uh, there are areas where the fences are right against the property line, that was what a reasonable person would've done in those times when building those houses. Uh, some of the fences are back, there's one particular lot where there is no fence and the homes are visible. Mark also mentioned that, um, uh, that there was a incident, safety incident that I have experienced with. We designed a home for Frankie Avalon, um, along, I think we tried to figure it out, I'm pretty sure it was two lots further south of their property. And we finished a swimming pool within two months, a car did come down from the Boulevard, which is the high slope, and into, into the pool, fully into the pool, by the way. Uh, so that, that is actually, actually did happen and I witnessed it, so I know it's true. So the condition of the fences over time is going to be an issue. Another issue that is, has crept up on us is the landscaping, everybody, a lot of people planted myoprum, uh, which is a fast-growing plant, short-lived, probably 20, 30 years, 40 years, something like that, not 100 years. And, uh, in, unfortunately, in the five coastal communities that we're dealing with, a insect, they don't know where it came from, they have no idea how it got here, but it's a thrip. And it's destroying those particular shrubs, and of which probably, there's 40 to 50 of them on the Meyer property. Those are going to die, there, there's no natural enemy of that insect local, it's not native here. And it's just gradually decaying, those plants, and I'll show you, we'll be showing you pictures of it in a second here. So that, that particular, uh, there's no, there is no cure for that, there's no, currently there's no program that would kill that insect nor protect the plants. They, believe it or not, they actually named it after the plant as Cam, both rips myoporai. There's about, again, about 30 or 40 of them on the, on the Sellers' property, or on the Myers' property. So the, um, the issue of the oak trees. Show the first one. We have one oak tree that needs to be removed, unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not sure which. Uh, the tree is badly diseased, and I don't know if you can see that from there. This is the tag that we put on, it's very enlarged, but it's dead. And that disease is a, we're not sure what the organism is, but it continues on down and, and to be truthful, there are, from the base of the tree, there's, it's attempting to, to survive. So there's a tug of war between the disease and the, so that tree is a tiny tree, is six inches in diameter, and, uh, so if one had to go, that would be the one. It happens to be in a location that the wall would, would, would destroy it. The other oak trees, we, I hear all the time, I've been working with oak trees for 50 years, I'm well-known for that. The, um, there's always the statement about encroachment into the protected zone of the tree. Well, the protected zone I created about many, many years ago, and it had, the extension of five feet had to do with pruning, not with roots, okay? I can tell you with certainty that the other seven trees will have minor amounts of root loss, the tree will not even show, display any sign that some roots have been removed, and those are, the trees are way away from the wall, these are all in the protected zones. Uh, I think you probably have looked at my oak tree report. Okay, now the, uh, the, the particular plant, the, okay, that's fine.
Mr. Dean, I just wanted to remind you, you have two minutes left if you are wanting your third team member to join you.
Okay. The particular plant that we, by the way, I, it was my recommendation to be put in a one gallon, not the owner's. He doesn't even know this. This particular, this particular plant is what we have chosen, and it's, we used it recently at the Reagan Library, we did the design of the Reagan Library. And, uh, this particular application, there's a wall, this is at the social security office in Thousand Oaks, and there's an 18-foot-high masonry wall right next to it. These were planted two and a half years ago from five gallon. And you could, if you could, I don't know if, maybe you wanna take that up there, do you wanna look at it, see it better? Yeah, it's, uh, and, and the, those are, were planted two and a half years ago. I guarantee you, planted from a one gallon, that's the best, best way to plant them from one gallon, that plant will be over six feet in one year. And it, as it goes up, it becomes more dense, and then there's a tendency to wanna prune it, and the more you prune it, the more dense it gets, and at the Reagan Library, you can't see through it, I mean, you absolutely can't see through it. It's, uh, stays very narrow. Those ones at the project are planted in four-foot, in a four-foot planter, and it doesn't creep into the zone of the walk, it's very narrow, but very dense, it's a great plant for that use. I think I probably should leave the rest of this for, for the owner.
Uh, commissioners, thank you very much again for hearing us out today. I just wanna say, I mean, this is about the safety of my family, this is about living 30 feet away from a major thoroughfare with cars zooming by, motorcycles revving their engines, my kids playing in the backyard with, you know, a freeway right next door to us, we just need some sort of solution, thank you very much.
Could you just state your name and city residence for the record, please?
Uh, Andy Myers, Thousand Oaks, California.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Reynolds, for Mr. Dean.
Mr. Dean.
James Dean, again, I forgot to say that, uh, you will not see that wall in one year. You will never see it again in one year, so...
Mr. Dean, you were talking about oak tree number 100?
Yes.
And the health of it?
Yes.
Then why in the report does it say it's going to be transplanted on the property?
Well, I, at the time, you know, I don't like taking oak trees out, and I had in my mind that was further away from the, from the fence and that you could build a wall. In fact, I stated that you could save that tree. Uh, I was wrong. On Saturday, I was up there, and it truly is three feet away from, and they had told me it was three feet away. So the tree can't be saved.
Okay, so therefore...
In any case, the tree is diseased beyond, uh, I would recommend, if somebody came to me and said, "What should I do with that tree?", I'd say, "Remove it."
Okay, and if it was approved, then we would replace?
Yes, it would, and you're better off at that particular time, because it's gonna be three or four to one, and you're losing one diseased tree, and that...
Right.
Oak trees have a tug of war constantly between disease and the tree gets, gains a little bit, the disease gains a little bit, and first thing, you know, so I think in reality, investing more time in that tree is the wrong thing to do.
Okay, so it should be removed, then?
Disease is in the system, and the tree could over time overcome it, that's true.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Any other questions? Commissioner Turpil.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
Not gonna let you get away.
Sure.
Um, my, my concern in looking at this particular project, and it was made noted, noted by staff, as to how much of the existing vegetation is really gonna have to be removed.
A large portion, unfortunately, whether he did the project or not, these plants are gonna die, so investing, it's gonna take time for that to occur.
Along the entire 486?
Well, yes, the, from, uh, in the particular part of the property lot that they live in, the next one is fully, there's not an oak tree on that whole, whole length, it's, it's the, the curse.
But I'm not just talking about the oak tree, I'm talking about the other vegetation that has grown up that makes that area very green as you're driving up.
Okay. Fortunately, I thought about that, I had Ken Ratner, he built the first house in North Ranch, I've known him for 40 years, 39 years, something like that. And I had him out on, on Saturday because, you know, one, it's so close to the Boulevard, you'd wanna build it from the Boulevard, but you really can't. And I had him walk down below to see how he could, he could build that wall without taking all the plants out. And he doesn't have to build any roads, doesn't have to get any equipment up there, and so his thought was, oh, by the way, I don't know, you wanna see the retaining walls?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind if that's okay with the other... Yeah, I wouldn't mind if that's okay with the other commissioners.
When I was brought into this, it was to kind of bring some clarity to the issue. And I met with, um, engineer because I wanted to know that if, what they had shown on the, on the other drawings couldn't be built because it would not be stable. So I wanted to, I asked the engineer, "How can we do this? How's the best way to do this?". So the idea was to build, uh, every 10 feet to build a caisson. It's a soldier pile, actually. And then put a grade beam at grade. So he thought that he could use a, extend a lift and get all of the stuff up in between. We walked it at some, for some time. And he's convinced that he could actually get equipment on the driveway to put that up there. And what they would do, the soldier piles favorably would be drilled from Westlake Boulevard and they're down...
Could you speak into the microphone, please, Mr. Dean?
They're going to have to go down 10 feet, 10-plus feet. And then the suggestion was to actually build those caissons with concrete and then come back and hand dig the, um, uh, grade beam that runs continuous. These are on 10-foot centers. The columns shown, the, uh, the columns with rock, stone on them are, are 20 feet apart, changed from the original plan of 15 to 20 feet on them. So every 10 feet, we would have a caisson and they would build the column above one of those caissons. So they're on 10-foot centers.
So, but, but what you, it sounded like you were referring to another project that you were working on. Is that how this one's going to be done?
No, that's what's designed here.
And that, and that will, that will save the vegetation the way it's built?
Uh, now, yes, we'll be able to save, that was my goal, was to save the vegetation. Uh, although the, I'm sorry. Okay. I haven't done this very often. So the, um, so, uh, this was designed specifically last week. This all happened within the last 10 days. And, uh, in meeting with engineer, I wanted to make sure that we brought to you something that we knew we could build.
Right, but the concern was though, my, my initial question was, is how much the vegetation is going to, the existing vegetation is going to be removed, not just the oak trees? Because that's such a green space. So what you're talking about is that will save a majority of what needs to be removed?
It'll save most of the foliage on his property. Unfortunately, the myoprums were planted a long time ago. I would suggest they not be all taken out at one time. They can be taken, if there's one in the way, they take that one out. And you do this slowly, so it's not...
Which is, which is a good segue because what you're telling us, if I remember, if I wrote it down correctly, is that the, the new plantings that are going in will be over six feet high and be fully dense.
Yes, within one year. I, I'm suggesting, I have suggested, this was always three feet on, on all the documents, so I left it alone. But in my opinion, this whole thing should shift one more foot, four feet. And then, uh, that shrub will stay fully within, behind the little rail fence. And, uh, this nature, the common nature of that plant grows very fast, very tall. I planted some in Taryn Foster's house, uh, when she works with us, uh, four years ago, they're 18 feet tall now.
Okay.
So it's a very, very fast-growing shrub and very dense. And, and, you know, it actually, in reality, as you're driving down Westlake Boulevard, after this matures, you'll see the rod iron fences, you won't see the wall.
Okay.
That's a fact. And I could stick...
I appreciate you taking the time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other question?
Any other questions for Mr. Dean?
Thank you.
Mr. Newman, Commissioner Newman?
Mr. Dean, just one, one quick question. Is there any issue at all with, uh, I, I'm aware that other kinds of vines that are close to walls sometimes have issues with moisture getting trapped in. Is that going to be an issue here?
No, it's not. In fact, and believe it or not, this plant is a blessing. This plant is considered to be moderate to low in terms of water use. Uh, it just happened, and it, believe it or not, this plant has only been probably on the market for 10 years. And, uh, we're using a lot, we, it's a great plant. And we don't know enough about it, what it's going to do in 20 years, but we've seen it five, six years old and it's fine. So it doesn't seem to have any problems.
All right, thank you. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I have, uh, a question or two for Mr. Sellers. Mr. Sellers, thanks for your presentation. In going through your letter, I was struck by one of the assertions on page 25 of the packet that there, quote, "There is no hodgepodge of different walls if this project is approved. There is no hodgepodge of different walls."
Well, what, what I'm talking about is that what you do tonight sets the uniform treatment for walls. And there won't be a hodgepodge of different styles of walls.
Well, yes, and you also said in your presentation that you're trying to get some uniformity here.
Yes.
But would you agree that at the present time, if, if we do approve this, that we're talking about uniformity in a lot of one with other, perhaps, other, others to follow? But at this time, it's not a hodgepodge because there's quantity one, yes?
Well, we're not going to build walls for all the lots, if that's the question, all the lots along Westlake Boulevard, obviously. And if another owner wants to come in, then they will have to meet the same design standards that, that we have established now with a wall in front of their, their property. So if you mean there may be spaces between the two locations where there might be walls, yes, I would agree.
That's not my question. What I'm asking is how you square your assertion that there's no hodgepodge of walls with the 1986 requirement that walls be uniform and that they be applied to all properties.
Well, I read that to be uniform treatment. It doesn't mean they're all built at once. It means a uniform treatment for all properties. So you're going to build a wall on your property, the uniform treatment is here, this type of exterior, this type of pilaster, this kind of spreading of the pilaster, it's a treatment.
Yes, and we're agreeing that it's not all because it's one property at this time, correct? Or, well, to be two properties.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is we're going to establish, hopefully, a uniform treatment tonight, if you approve this wall, that the next applicant should meet rather than have a different style of wall on their property. And so that there is no uniformity in the wall.
Offhand, do you know how many lots would have to be modified to come into uniformity?
You mean how many lots along Westlake Boulevard?
Yeah. If we're going to be uniform, how, what are we talking about here? How many?
I have no idea how many.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sellers.
Mr. Sellers, I have a question, unless, unless anybody else says. Short of having a noise expert here tonight, I'll default to you and you can tell me if you can. Uh, in the report, there was talking about, well, I said, the letter from the, uh, your, your noise consultant was referring to a reduction of loudness of 25%. And you also mentioned that his study determined that there's currently a 71 decibel rating there currently. So if there's a four-decibel reduction from 71, how does that calculate the 25%?
Yeah, I, I'm not definitely a, a noise expert, but what, what he indicated that there would be a perceptible, perceptible, perceptible decrease in the amount of noise. And that's what he felt. Now, whether it's 25%, uh, means 25% is 71 decibels, but a 25% appreciable reduction in noise, that, that's the goal. If we, we'd love to have a higher wall. It'd have a greater sound mitigation effect. But again, that's not the only reason we're here. We're willing to go to six feet rather than eight feet because, uh, that's the city standard.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant before I move on? Okay, hearing no further questions. Uh, Mr. Tom Oswald, if you would please join us at the dais and please state your name and your city residence, please.
Chair Nichols, my name is Tom Oswald, Thousand Oaks. Really glad to be here tonight. I'm a local architect and I am the consulting architect for Westlake North Properties Owners' Association. And I'm representing the association tonight. There are 450 member properties in the association. Two miles of the association borders on Westlake Boulevard from Hillcrest to Canaan to the north. There are no walls along that two-mile stretch. This would set a precedent for having walls on Westlake Boulevard. And if you look at the map, you can see, and hopefully you can gather where the arrow is pointing on where the wall is. And if you look from Hillcrest to Canaan, that is the stretch of Westlake Boulevard, we're talking about where our association borders. And you can see the amount of length we're talking about with no walls whatsoever. And any walls that have been asserted, they're 20 feet back and that's our guidelines. 20 feet back allows us to do the landscaping we need to create the openness that we're looking for in our association. Westlake North is not a gated community. It is accessed by public streets. Its beauty and charm is in its openness. Its landscape properties, its rural feel, and its natural vistas. These are a few pictures of the houses we have in, in Westlake North. On March 11th, the Board of Directors voted unanimously to deny the Myers' application for a 400, for a 486-foot-long, eight-foot-tall wall along the rear property line of their two properties that would face Westlake Boulevard. The reason for denial was that the wall at that location would violate the architectural guidelines and the established philosophy of a rural and open community whereby any solid screening was to be done through landscape materials, not walls. The statement, a statement of intent on the front pages of the guidelines states, "Walled compounds and visually reclusive developments are discouraged." Page 13 of the guidelines clearly states that solid privacy walls are not allowed on Westlake Boulevard. And that screening is to be done with plant materials. Page 14 of the guidelines clearly states that all walls over two and a half feet tall need to be set back from the rear property lines 20 feet. The walkway adjacent to the proposed wall is used by many of the residents of Westlake And the North Ranch community in general. The impacts of the walkers and joggers and drivers along Westlake Boulevard will be substantial. You cannot rely on landscaping to cover a wall. You have, as we heard before, there's diseases, there's droughts, there's all kinds of things that can occur that means those plants die. We heard about that. You cannot rely on landscaping. You have to rely on a wall being a wall. Like I said before, the walkway is over two miles long and connects North Ranch to the promenade center to the south. This is our photo simula, simulation of the wall. The proposed wall will block filtered light and gentle breezes and will force the removal of established landscaping. The traffic noise reduction with the addition of this wall shown by the applicant is only The resident was required to be billed for the noise on Westlake Boulevard. It's required additional noise, uh, elements were required when the house was built. It's in the conditions, just for this purpose, for the noise element. They wouldn't allow it to build the house unless it did these additional things that were required of the builder. And you can see that in the conditions from the city. And also, there is no evidence that other properties in the nearby area will benefit from this sound reduction or this wall at all. The sound will produce a reflective sound that could bounce off the wall and off the hills to the west, and there's a steep hill to the west. And could very easily tunnel noise that could increase the noise levels to the adjacent properties and definitely to the persons using the pathway. Pollutants from car traffic the Myers are trying to mitigate with the wall will be now backed up against the wall and the users of the walkway will be impacted. Natural filtered breezes will be blocked, joggers such as high school track teams that use the pathway, as well as young and old patrons of Thousand Oaks will be affected. Safety concerns, the Myers site for this, uh, section of road could be mitigated by the use of safety railing seen on many roads in the North Ranch area. You could see them here. They're mainly used for winding-type roads. However, because the road is wide, flat, straight, we don't know of any official report that states this road is dangerous. Security in a non-gated community is a factor for most citizens of Thousand Oaks. Westlake North provides a professional security company that patrols the association and encourages community watch and neighborhood awareness rather than high walls and security cameras. The Myers bought their home only a few years ago. They knew of the established guidelines prohibiting walls on Westlake Boulevard. The Myers knew the noise and circumstances of Westlake Boulevard. They knew this was not a gated community or a walled community. Yet now they want the community to change for them for what they feel is in their best interest. The Board of Directors need to look beyond individuals and towards the common good of the association. The task, as you all know, can be very difficult, especially for volunteer members who are on association, who are association neighbors of the applicants. The association would appreciate your supporting Westlake North Homeowners' Association and your city staff and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Newman?
Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
One of the many emails we got was from a, a North Ranch resident who couldn't be here tonight, called Priscilla Boone, uh, on Oak Place Drive, which is very near to this property. And she stated that she's not inherently opposed to sound walls and that she can see where they would do some good. And I'm wondering if there's been any dialogue between the homeowners' association and the Myers regarding a larger and more inclusive solution to the sound issue along Westlake.
Well, we just got this particular application. We didn't get any other alternative solutions. I think there could be that dialogue, absolutely. But there's really very limited solutions to this issue. Unfortunately, it's pretty broad-ranged and without putting up a 20-foot wall, I really don't think any of those neighbors are going to be totally satisfied with the results. And as you see them on the freeways, you know those are not six-foot walls.
No, not at all. Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Mr. Tappell?
Yes, I want to thank you. Well, thank you for your presentation as well. The applicant was showing in their presentation, though, the wrought iron with all this tarp and stuff on the backside. Is that within the purview of the HOA and does that follow your guidelines?
It's, I don't think it's part of our guidelines at all. And unfortunately, that was something that happened as a result of the, the board allowing people to put those up temporarily to allow for the screening to grow because they wanted that privacy. So we said, "Okay, put up the screening, we'll wait till your plant material grows to a significant level." Unfortunately, again, we got the situation where maybe they didn't water enough, maybe there was disease. But we ended up with a situation now where we were, they didn't get the plants to...
But we ended up with a situation now where we were, they didn't get the plants to grow, and now it's an enforcement issue. So yeah, I think the Board needs to be a little bit more diligent about taking care of that. That, to me, is a little, but it still lets light, air go through. It's not a solid, permanent structure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening. Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
And from reading the literature in here, there are 44 homes to back up to Westlake Boulevard?
Yeah, 44 to 48 homes, yes.
Okay, because it says 44 in here.
Yeah.
And who maintains, let's say, if they were to put in the wall in the bushes? It's your association or through their homeowners' association dues that...
No, it's going to be on their property, so they have to maintain the...
They would have to maintain on the backside of the wall between the path. Is that how it is for all the homeowners?
Yes, absolutely. But when you have a wrought iron fence, it's no big deal.
Right.
But try to do that when you have a solid wall, maybe a little difficult.
Okay.
And I also, okay.
Yeah, no, that was, I'm glad that that came up because I was wondering about that. I just assumed the association is the one that takes care of all of that.
Yeah, and it's, you're not going to see very many of these walls. This is a very expensive wall we're talking about. Not too many people are going to be filled caissons, and they're on tremendous slopes. You're going to see very little replication.
Right. Well, I'm going to ask staff afterwards about that, the 10-foot-deep foundations.
Yeah, it's quite an expensive wall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Oswald? Thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next I'll get into our speaker cards, and I'll try to alternate those that I have seen here for opposing and supporting. So I'm going to start with Kathy Schultz, please. And following Ms. Schultz will be Bill Rees. Forgive me for mispronunciating.
Good evening, staff members.
And if you could just please give your name and city residents.
Kathy Schultz, president of the Westlake North Property Owners Association, and I live in Thousand Oaks. And pretty much everything has been said. I just wanted to introduce myself as the president of the Board and to let you know that we did have a meeting. As Tom mentioned, we discussed the presentation of the wall, and Mr. Myers and Mr. Oswald both had a chance to present the pros and cons of the wall. There was a discussion amongst the Board, a long discussion actually, and the Board did vote 5-0 to deny the application. I just hope that you will support the staff report and the 129 petition signatures that you received. 91 were from homeowner or association people, and 38 were from walkers or other folks who use the pathway. Also, you should have received 10 to 12 letters or more that were not in favor of having a large wall along Westlake Boulevard. So our hope is that you will deny the application request for this major modification tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Thank you, Mrs. Schultz. Okay, Bill Rees, and please give me the correct pronunciation, and then Mr. Randy Witt.
Good evening. Bill Reese.
Reese. And your city residents, please. Thank you.
Live at the corner of Westlake Boulevard and Crest Haven Drive. Three topics to talk about this evening. First, vista, precedent, and investment. As to vista, I think you've heard from other speakers, but I guess I'll repeat it for emphasis, that as you drive along Westlake Boulevard, those wrought iron fences have been covered by various stages of green material, opaque, not translucent, sometimes gray, sometimes in various stages of disrepair. So I think the idea that there's a scenic vista along Westlake or some sort of six-foot-high observation that's pleasant is incorrect. Second, precedent. I think that there's a concern if this wall were to be approved, that it would set a precedent. I think as a plan commission, you probably could not have a better precedent in which you should approve because of the building materials, the way in which it's presented, the architectural detail, and the landscaping accompanying it, I think would provide a more pleasing atmosphere as well as achieve what the applicant wishes to in terms of privacy, security, and sound attenuation. Finally, investment. I know for many of you, we probably look like the folks who bought a house next to the airport, and now we're complaining about the airplane noise. And yes, the airport was there first. But I also think, as a plan commission, you should think about people who are willing to make a significant investment in their home to try and correct a less-than-desirable situation. Yes, the situation existed, but you now have somebody who's willing to make a very significant investment in his home to correct a situation which he finds less-than-desirable. And I would hope that others who live along the road might make similar investments as we would hope all homeowners would to correct a situation, whether it's new plant materials that have died. You want them at any step along the way to continue to invest in their property to upgrade it from a less-than-desirable situation to a more desirable situation. So for those reasons, the lack of the vista, the importance of a precedent here, and finally, making an investment in their home that's quite substantial, I would urge the plan commission to approve the project as presented this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Thank you for, I just said, thank you, and forgive me for my mispronunciation. Any questions for Mr. Reese? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Randy Witt, and then following will be Teriann Garcia.
One gallon pitasporum, different genus, different species. But I just want you to get a feel for what it looks like.
Sir, you need to speak into the microphone just, and please introduce yourself and your city residents.
Those are one gallon pitasporum, a different, same genus, different species than the, than what is intended to be planned. I could not find that species in one gallons. They said they didn't exist after going through about seven nurseries I just gave up. But I was intrigued, actually, by the comment about somebody moving in next to an airport and then deciding that the airplane noise was objectionable. And I think that is probably exactly the case here. We heard some comments about things have changed since 1980, but the homeowner hasn't been here since 1980. They moved in approximately two years ago. However, in your packet, there are some letters opposing the wall from homeowners who have been in here in the association much longer than 10 years, and they still wrote letters opposing the wall for them, even with their long-term experience seeing things change on Westlake Boulevard. They realize that the wall was a bad idea and not something that was in keeping with the neighborhood. So the question really comes back to, was the wall there when, was Westlake Boulevard there when the property was purchased? And the answer was clearly yes. In 1976, we wrote our CCNRs and Architectural Guidelines, and solid walls were not permitted in those documents. In 2010 and 2012, we rewrote as a board and with the help of five homeowners and whoever else wanted to participate in the process, in the project, those same CCNRs, and then mailed them out to the entire homeowners' association. We received comments, none of them along, relating to walls along Westlake Boulevard. And then the entire association voted on an update of the CCNRs and Architectural Guidelines. The result of that was that they were approved, and we moved forward from there. But all of those documents were available when this property was purchased by the current owners. The current rules are that walls must be 20 feet set back, solid walls must be set back 20 feet from Westlake Boulevard, and that the height may not exceed six feet. So I'm asking, if you consider the airport analogy, if you considering, consider the documents that they received when they went through escrow, if you consider the fact that the oak tree ordinances that the city has also were on the books when they purchased the property, and that his neighbor just up the street did a magnificent job with wrought iron fencing and mature plants, not one gallons, in covering up and protecting the, or providing screening and safety and noise reduction. And that the goal in all of this is to work with the community and to stay within the existence of the nature and feeling of an existing environment. So the issue really boils down to three questions, and that one of them is, should an entire neighborhood, or city for that matter, bend its ordinances and policies for the needs of a single homeowner who wants to attempt to industrialize a previously rural and scenic drive by building something that will obviously be a graffiti magnet for years to come and not really going to be covered by much of anything? Should a community trade its vistas and traditions in exchange for a creation of walled compounds? That's not what I moved into the association to see, and I hope that is what the commission will support. Additionally, we have an issue of construction along Westlake Boulevard and the fact that caissons are going to be drilled apparently from Westlake Boulevard in order to save the landscape, creating a traffic snarl while 48 or 50 caissons are drilled. So I would encourage a no vote or a disapproval of the wall based on those facts.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Any questions? Thank you. Next, Teriann Garcia, followed by Mr. Nick Kidway.
Good evening. I am the Myers' direct next-door neighbor. They've been wonderful neighbors since we moved in, and everything that they have done to their property has been top-notch. These are not people who are going to slap something up or trying to make the area not be beautiful. I just find it kind of comical, actually, that our homeowners' association has spent this amount of time preparing for one homeowner's wall when apparently they don't have any time to take care of issues that have been very visible and, I think, brought to the attention of walls that, I'm sorry, fencing that has not been properly maintained. This Board decides to pick and choose who they go after and things that they bring to the attention. I just find it kind of funny, actually. But in any event, I do think that Mr. Myers' petition should be approved. I think that it's not going to be unsightly as the demonstration that the homeowners' association put up. It's a six-foot wall from that side, and I think it's a, it's not going to be the, you know, the demise of Westlake Boulevard. There's lots of walls going up and down Canaan Road that are the pink stone that, I don't know what that block wall is, but they're about six feet tall, up Canaan Road right around the corner. And, you know, a lot of the fencing and things that are approved are not being maintained. And so I just find it interesting, that's all. But I hope Mr. Myers gets his petition put through, and I think as being his direct neighbor, I'm in a position to say that, yes, I do hear the noise, and we are aware that we moved in a close proximity to Westlake Boulevard. But I think that the increase of traffic has, is evident, and I think that we have to be a fluid community. I think when things come up and there's a nice way to solve a problem, then I think it should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Any questions? Mr. Nick Kidway, followed by Jody Parker.
Nick Kidway, as Interpretenary Park Director Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks. First of all, I'd like to thank TOTV for fixing the sound after months I can hear without headphones. I would like to say, you've heard the mantra, it's a location, 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 location. That's what we are talking about, especially when we look at the many letters by neighbors who are not impacted the same way as this location is. Commissioner, we are talking about health and safety. Health and safety trumps the minor issues of aesthetics. We are talking about quality of life, whether it's pollution of the air, water, sight, or sound. It is pollution, and it impacts our quality of life. It degrades our life. I could not believe, and just that one line, and Mr. Sellers is sitting there, that staff said that reasonable use exists without the proposed wall. How can you say that without, I mean, being unreasonable? Let's see if this works. I could not, yeah, it does work. I mean, I left my paperwork, this is the Westlake sign, "America was built by geniuses," and we have idiots running it. Nothing about the days, we have the most smart people on the planning commission. But the solution is right in front of you, I mean. That won't work. You have it in your green packet. I sent the pictures of my wall, which is not a wall, it's ivy-covered. I mean, a simple condition that the wall should be hidden from the citizens by planting some kind of vegetation solves the whole problem. But then that would be too simple. And we also even heard from some of the people with some of the excuses. In fact, I had not noticed before, but the wrought iron fence is just an eyesore. I mean, something, and the devil is in the details, they want a red wall. It should be sandstone so that it blends in, but the wall would be, would be covered right away. And the issue over here is, they have a $3 million home, and they cannot sleep at night. I mean, that is not reasonable use because the second story is flush with the Westlake Boulevard. That's, that's the issue, and you don't find that until you live there, not by going to an open house or, or just taking a walk-through. These are the things that you find out after you live in a property. And what they are proposing is not unreasonable. They should be allowed remediation to be able to have reasonable use of their property, and a block wall hidden from the neighbors and the community with vegetation is an excellent, simple solution that just behooves common thinking. In fact, these are, you know, full-scale things, and this is the oak tree report. I mean, that's why we had changed the report. I mean, just like money that is just confetti, they are paying $20,000 a year in property taxes and treated like dirt over here that they can, that they have to go through all these hoops when it's a simple request for quality of life, to be able to sleep properly and not have to worry, Mr. Dean mentioned, having a car come in the pool. The kids are playing there, and the cars are going at 60, and what would happen? I mean, that is a good possibility. Are you willing to take that? I say that we make room for these people.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Any questions? Jody Parker, followed by David Callahan.
Good evening. I'm Jody Parker. I live on Oak Place Drive in Westlake Village. I live exactly behind the vacant lot of Andy's property. I've lived there almost 19 years. When I moved in, Westlake Boulevard was not like it is now. Things have changed, and therefore I think it might behoove the Board to approve another thought process. The noise is bad, and safety is an issue. I know three people that have been killed on Westlake Boulevard, one of them being in my carpool. I really hope you approve this wall. I think a precedent might be a nice thing to start setting for our area. I do like the ruralness, and I do like the green. If we have the green and a little more safety and a little bit of... If we have the green and a little more safety and a little bit of sound, because the sound affects my house a lot. And I find it kind of sad that I live right within this noise area that we're all talking about, and me and a lot of my friends never got a petition to sign. It seems like the people that were in favor of the wall never got to be heard from. I'm here because I wanted Andy to have his wall, and I hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Any questions? Mr. David Callahan.
Good evening. My name is David Callahan, and I live at Crest Haven Drive in Thousand Oaks. And our property doesn't butt up to Westlake Village, but it's within close proximity. There's another yard behind us. And I'm insulted, the Property Owners Association doesn't speak for me, because it's loud. And the fact that it was mentioned that there were, it's a safe drive, safe road, cars, the 50 mile an hour speed limit, that's never followed, so it's, it's not a safe road. I moved there three years ago, from Studio City, thinking I was coming up to a quiet environment, and it's louder there than my house in Studio City, and I lived on a pretty popular thoroughfare. I think it's, I wish I had done it sooner. I don't know what I could have done, because I don't think I can do anything with my yard to do anything about the, the sound. But I'm glad someone's doing something about it, or trying to do something about it, because that sound is an issue. And I looked at my house, we saw it, I think, on a Saturday morning, fell in love with the area, fell in love with the house, bought the house, didn't stay there throughout the day, which maybe we should have, but the whole airport analogy, I didn't hear the sound, I didn't notice the sound. But once you settle into a place, after, it didn't take long to figure out that there was a problem. Houses purchased, don't regret the purchase, but you can't be ignored that more people are affected than just the people along Westlake Boulevard. So I applaud Mr. Myers and his family for taking some action here and trying to do something that's not only going to improve his property, but could be something that could improve other residents of the area, and the safety issue as well, which doesn't personally impact me, but it'd impact my neighbors, because those accidents do happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Any questions? Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards, I have four cards. They're just for state, written statements only, three opposed, one in support. Just want to make sure that none of those were wanting to speak. Any questions for staff? Commissioners, any questions for staff? Or staff, do you have maybe an array of items you, you heard, you perhaps expound on before we quiz you a little bit?
Yes, staff has a couple comments to respond to the applicant's or applicant's attorneys. And one of us, first we'll start with the, the original conditions. Staff did acknowledge, back in 1986, the planning staff at that time, this originally suggests the, the block wall. But however, staff, the planning commission, after reviewing the, what the intention of Northway Ranch, and also what the scenic highway elements of the general plan, they kind of modified what the staff, the original conditions, and they modified the condition and imposed to require to be have a consistent fencing design, but may more paying attention to the existing landscaping, which they want to have a, still have a sense of openness, sense of a semi-rural design, as the original envision for the area. And second item is about the, the applicant's attorney mentioned the wall at the northwest corner of Westlake and Crest Haven Drive. And that project went to planning commission approval, and planning commission, at that time, did acknowledge the wall. But what happened was this particular project, that the wall is set back about approximately at least 30 feet away from Westlake Boulevard. So they're now literally right next to Westlake Boulevard. And also in between that 30 feet, they require tons of landscaping to soften the impact of the wall. And for that particular track, I think it's only for eight houses within that track, and only two lots fronting the Westlake Boulevard. So, planning commission at that level did not consider that as a significant impact, looking at the Westlake Boulevard. And regarding the proposed landscaping, staff does have concern about, first of all, proposed one gallon material to be used. And also, the other thing, staff does have concern about a couple things. First of all, the access, once you have the block wall, how are you going to get access to maintain, and also to provide some necessary improvement, or even a sprinkler, to maintain the wall, to bring sprinkler systems? So staff does have a concern about the overall maintenance, not just for short-term, but also long-term sake. And staff like to turn attention to our city consultant, talk about the one gallon proposed landscaping material.
Thank you, Matt. Couple of concerns. I don't have experience with this particular plant, that variety, but the species, and if it grows eight feet in one year, I'm shocked. So, I'm reluctant to endorse that. The other condition is, as Matt says, the access to this facility, because as we know, downhill lots and off-site landscaping is difficult to maintain. So some sort of gate or access to that, maybe between lots or something, would be advisable. Then the overall issue of uniformity, is this going, if the wall is approved and this planting is approved, is that going to be consistent all the way down Westlake Boulevard as one monoculture of plant? Or is there some variety of plant material that should be introduced? That's the kind of thing we would look at in the planning department approvals. So we need an overall plan for entire Westlake Boulevard, if this is approved as a prototype.
Staff also have introduced Kathy Lowery from our public works department, she can address some of the public safety standpoint.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Lowery, as Matt said. I just thought I'd just shed a little light on just statistically what we have in terms of accidents and traffic volumes. Not to say that there's, these volumes are high or low, but just the historical information. Just looking at south of Canaan Road on Westlake Boulevard, in 2004, we had approximately 13,600 trips, and in 2012, we had 12,700 trips. So then, from a statistical analysis, you could almost say over that 10, if you just take a snapshot at 10 years, there wasn't a significant impact. Not to say that during that time, when the 23 was under, prior to construction then, during construction, you had a lot of diverted traffic onto Westlake, and then it all went back on the freeway. And then the last year with the 101 construction, there might be diverted traffic on Westlake right now, and the idea it'll go back on the 101. The diverted traffic being that people are coming northbound on the 101, they get to Westlake, they see traffic, and they just, they exit on Westlake, up Westlake to Arbless, and then take Arbless to Herbs and get to Simi Valley that way. But basically, you don't see a big growth in the area, but there's, there is traffic, but it doesn't look like it significantly increased, as well as throughout the whole city. We don't see traffic throughout the entire city increasing anymore. It's, um, trends nationally, traffic's actually decreasing. And then in terms of accidents, I looked at accidents northbound on Westlake between Cloverfield and Canaan Road, as just a snapshot for 10 years. And over 10 years, there was three accidents that were reported. Two out of the three were drug or alcohol-related, and one was people racing each other. None of them involved going off the side of the road. That's not to say that that can't happen, but just to shed light on, in 10 years, in this section, there hasn't been anyone driving in off the road. Then I also looked at accidents between Hillcrest and Arbless, looking at each of the intersections. And what I found is, it's, again, statistically insignificant, if you look at a 10-year period, for the first five years, it was the same number of accidents, about 47%, I mean, 52% of the accidents overall of 10 years happened in the first five years, and the other 48% happened in the later five years, over a 10-year period. And this is all along Westlake. Again, there's a lot more accidents at Arbless and Westlake than at, than any other intersection, so it's not really a statistical to say, you know, how the whole thing lays out. But just from an overall historical perspective, we haven't seen accidents increase or decrease, almost like Boulevard in this area. So, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Newman.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lowery, for that, quantifying what we're talking about with traffic. You, the most recent figure you cited was 12,700 trips per day?
That's correct, but that's 2012.
Is there anything more current? I'm asking because I think we heard the 17,000 figure in the applicant's testimony.
And I'm not sure where that came from. I did look up the Sapeway Trails, which is the Langranch Park, their traffic study had traffic numbers in it, and they didn't have the date, and that, actually, that study took so long to get published. It says 2014, but I don't think the numbers in that are, they might be 10 years old. But there was a bubble there, which, and everyone knows, if you drove on Westlake, you had queues at the intersections, so that might, but there's not that much traffic there right now.
Also, in terms of the accident rate, is there any data on whether, not in terms of the absolute numbers there, but whether the rate of accidents per trip is comparable, higher, lower, the same as other similarly traveled routes in, in Thousand Oaks?
What we look at in Traffic Division, we look at rates. Now, rate is based on the number of accidents versus the number of cars at an intersection. So we don't look at segments, and we look at the top 10 accident locations in the city per, at an intersection based on rates. And this, whether it's Canaan, I mean, Canaan and Westlake, or Cloverleaf and Westlake, or that segment, that's not in the top 10. So, I didn't do a whole lot more analysis, because I would just say it's not in the top 10. And I should, our accident rates are very, very low. To even make in the top 10, we're still, it's, we don't have a lot of accidents in the big scheme of things.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds.
I have a question for Mr. Chang. If they're finished with answering questions that came up during the dialogue from the applicant.
Oh, yes.
Okay. I'm curious, the wall, they kept on talking about it'll have 10-foot foundation at the columns, but the wall is still going to require, what, a two-foot foundation all along, won't I mean, you're just not going to have the, the one in every column. You're going to have a ditch that's going to have to be dug all along for footings for the foundation for the wall. I mean, that's how you build a wall, right? I know in the front of my house, I have eight-foot-deep foundations in the whole front of my house, when we built it back in '76. So, I know what it's like.
Commissioner Reynolds, Richard Campbell. I'd like to answer that. The type of construction is caissons, like poles going into the ground, and there's a grade beam, which you're saying is about two feet thick. It's going to bridge between those caissons. So they don't have to do a lot of trenching, they just have to clear an area so they can bridge from caisson to caisson.
Okay, so they actually won't be trenching with the backhoe or anything?
I don't know how they're going to do the construction, but they're, they're going to have to clear a little space, because it's a slope and it's going to be a flat top.
Right, right.
So, they'll be moderate.
Right, but I can see that that whole area would be disturbed, and that's why it would probably take removing, you know, vegetation and everything there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have, if not, I have a few questions for staff. Mr. Chang, there was mention that the house was built with some certain noise attenuation features. Could you perhaps expound on what those may have been?
As part of the approval for the house, the developers or applicant acknowledged, at that time, of course, a location adjacent to Westlake Boulevard. And through the design review process, staff always encouraged the applicant or developer at that time to pay attention to the sensitivity of location, and provide, I mean, additional insulation or dual-pane windows to address some of the traffic noise. However, those are not conditioned, imposed by the staff, because those are supposed to be under the developers, when they acknowledge what's going on. So, it's kind of based on what the developer wanted to do at that time. What can staff, what staff can only do is provide kind of suggestions or recommendations, and it's up to the developers or applicant at that time to install necessary some improving measures.
And just out of curiosity, and I don't want to step on any architect's toes here, but if you had seen bedroom windows proposed in the back of the house, would you have pointed out the noise issues and say, hey, maybe you want to consider putting the bedroom windows on the side of the house, or on the other, other faces of the house? Would you have brought those types of issues up as well during that discussion?
Yes, this is part of the review process, not just, when staff looking at a project, not just the site plan, the overelevation, but also the functionality, how everything's a function. However, some of the details are kind of up to the applicant or developer to, because they could be their dream house, or it could be the way the design, or it could be some of the functionality they look at it. So, what the staff can only do is provide recommendations or suggestions, but staff don't necessarily enforce them to have a, decide where the window is, or where a bedroom is.
Sure, okay. Mr. Oswald was pointing out and gave us exhibits here of the homeowners' association's CCNRs, codes, covenants, and restrictions, as far as their guidelines for that area. What type of weighting does that carry in either the city's evaluation process? Is there coordination, or is it just a completely separate process, and there's no consideration given whatsoever? Could you perhaps explain that process?
Yes. In the Northway Ranch area, staff always recommend, or strongly encourage, the applicant, not just for this particular project, but any project that's got to do with the exterior improvement, whether it be changing a roof, building an addition, or adding a block wall, we always encourage or strongly recommend the applicant contact the association, get their approval prior to submitting to the city. One is to establish a working relationship, and the other one is, one is establishing a working relationship from the city's standpoint, work with the HOA to come up as a design that's acceptable from a community standpoint, as a HOA standpoint. But the second is to have a different set of eyes. Maybe CCNR has a different criteria though, when, when city you're looking at it. But overall, when city's looking at a project, will review the project based on city's criteria and regulations, so not necessarily what the CCNR says. And so, in this particular case, for example, CCNR states that there shall be no block wall along Canaan and Westlake Boulevard. We don't have that in the city regulations. What we have is just a fencing design that was initially approved, and we go by what's the consistent fencing design. So, city will look at it based on city's regulation and policies, so not necessarily what the CCNR says.
So if I could rephrase that, you will make sure that the applicant coordinates, or at least contacts, the HOA to get their input, and if they are at odds, that's really between the two of them, that the city will still continue to evaluate it based on the own, the city's policies and guidelines, or requirements, regulations, codes, ordinances, and really won't take, not that they won't take consideration, but are not required or obligated to the CCNRs?
Yes, city doesn't force private CCNR. Basically, CCNR is a private agreement between the homeowner and the homeowners' association. So, what city does is review based on city's criteria, regulation, not necessarily CCNRs.
Okay. And, Mr. Towne, you may want to weigh into this, just a quick question came up with the, with the tarps and such, along with the fences. Is that a code enforcement issue at all, or is that, is that regulated in any regard in this case?
If, if complaints were received, then they would be referred to code compliance. I'm not aware of any, any complaints being received to date. not aware of any complaints being received to date. You know, as you heard from the speakers, that was probably installed as a privacy measure early on when landscaping was installed and just either never taken down or simply replaced over the years.
Okay. A couple more questions. There was a comment made that landscaping is not reliable. Mr. Campbell, would you perhaps weigh in on that? You know, obviously, plants do grow, die. They have a finite lifespan, aside from insects, disease, and other issues. Could you maybe encapsulize that as far as the city's perspective in this type of case where screening is a major consideration?
Yes, that's true. This plant's a very healthy and supposedly pest-free plant, but we never know what next pest is going to come along. So that's why I'm saying if we put this all the way down Westlake Boulevard and a pest attacked it, then we'd lose everything. Maintenance is the main issue and they need to have access rather than driving clear around, parking on Westlake Boulevard and maintaining it, or walking clear around. I don't know how they're going to maintain it unless they have some access gate or something from the lower side. And that would be the important thing. So if a plant dies, they can replace it. If the irrigation system gets stuck on and washes down Westlake Boulevard, somebody could see it. Those are the issues that I would be concerned with.
Okay. Thank you. And then perhaps Ms. Lowry, there was a photograph of a simulation or I guess maybe something in town of a guard railing as perhaps an option for the safety features. When is that type of device considered an option in these types of scenarios as far as you're concerned or the guidelines that we use for that type of thing?
The American Public Works Association guidelines, I may be quoting the wrong, it's literally outside my office. For what the slope versus the angle, there's a whole calculation of where the guard will. And actually, it would have been required to be installed as part of the plans if originally it was required to be put in there. So it's, not to say that it couldn't be put in there, but it would have been required as part of the original development. And most developments are graded so that you don't need to put guard rail in. It's kind of, and we do have right behind the Civic Arts Plaza, a timber-backed guardrail. You know, it doesn't always have to be metal. There's some guardrail on Borcher Road, in the middle of Borcher Road going up now, but it's, there's city stand, or there's national standards that the city follows.
Okay. Thank you. And then finally, the premise of this, I believe from the applicant's perspective, is noise, obviously other issues, but primarily noise, and that there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of information for us to evaluate or chew on as far as whether it's a legitimate request or not, whether, I mean, I know Westlake Boulevard is noisy. I was just out there Saturday. I've been out there. I realize the traffic is a little bit different than when I was first on that street thirty-some years ago. But it's nice to have numbers. And is there anything from a city perspective, was there any requirement for that, or anybody can evaluate what limited information was provided, that we can have some evaluations whether or not it's a legitimate request and if this sound wall would have any effect at all in that?
The applicant did not, even though applicant provide a sound, a letter for a consultant, however, the letter itself did not state the original or what the current decibel is. It's just saying that the proposal were going to reduce four decibels. And as part of a city staff review process, that will review the material submitted by the applicant. And however, for this particular project, the applicant did not provide any sound-related study. And city is not required to put, own study for a private project, something like this. So we don't have any sound study.
Okay. All right. I understand. I have no further questions unless any commissioners do. Okay. That being the case, then we have, the applicant has another five minutes for a rebuttal. Mr. Sellers, if you kindly state your name and city for the residence for the record, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Sellers, City of Thousand Oaks for the applicant. First off, we will have a gate so that there will be access to this area from down below. That's, we thought of that originally and we know that that needs to have some sort of, for the gardener to take care and maintain this area up there. We will basically agree with whatever planning variety the city wants. If you feel that there needs to be a different look, a different kind of planning, great, we'll agree to that. We can do a condition that is subject to the city's listing of the appropriate plants for in front of this wall. Mr. Dean basically gave you an example of a plant that he's found very successfully, grows very rapidly, drought tolerant, and it's grown up to sixteen feet in two and a half years. So, so that's his personal experience, so that's why he suggested. But we're willing to go with whatever plant mix that the city feels is appropriate. This is really a city question. It's not an HOA question. We're not dealing with a private street within a gated community. We're dealing with a city street. We're here not just for sound, we're here also for safety. And I hear this, well, we haven't had a lot of accidents. Just wait until we do have a serious accident. I don't think that's the appropriate approach here. We have an applicant that's willing to spend the money to put this wall up, not asking the city to spend city funds to put up a guardrail or some other sort of protective device. He's quite willing to do that. It is a concern. Mr. Dean, again, indicated that there was, very close to this, there was a house that, or a car that ended up into the backyard, ended at the pool in the backyard. So we feel that this is a serious city question. The quote on seventeen thousand, the seventeen thousand came from a quote that I read in the Acorn. They had interviewed city staff. So I kind of assumed it was right, but I guess you can't rely on everything you read in the paper. But it did say seventeen thousand seven hundred trips in talking with somebody out of the Public Works Department in the paper. So that's why that figure came. The, again, I mentioned the plants. The plants that were planted up here were totally different than what we're going to propose, our experience with that kind of plant. The applicant told me that seventy-five percent of his neighbors who are next to Westlake Boulevard signed the consent letters or the support letters. So while there may be a number of people that drive by, but the people who are really impacted by this wall and benefit from this wall are in support of this concept. And I think that's a key issue. I mean, we're, we're not doing this, again, just for aesthetics, for broad public benefit, for anybody driving up and down Westlake Boulevard. We're really here for the homeowners who are next to this city public street. And finally, I think with, Mr. Reese talked about the vista there is not attractive. The vista there is not, and I don't know what semi-rural means, but the vista is kind of a hodgepodge of different types of fences, wrought-armed fences, different types of screening, different kinds of plants. So that there is no real defined uniformed vista on Westlake Boulevard. Quality will be in this wall. The Myers have always done quality projects throughout their house. The investment that they have in this wall is extraordinary. It's an amazing amount of money that they will have to spend to put this wall up. And I think the key here is, again, trees and bushes don't stop sound. Only, unfortunately, walls will stop sound and help to mitigate that. And with that, oh, and by the way, they indicated to me that the person that built this house was an owner builder. This was his first house. They don't have any real sound attenuation within the house. And I think just saying, all right, we'll get double-plane windows and we'll have sound attenuation, I think that penalizes for somebody that they can't open their window and enjoy a breeze. You got to live in the sealed building just because you don't want sound. So what they're trying to do, I think is reasonable, trying to mitigate this sound to a certain degree. Yes, we could have a much higher wall and basically mitigate the sound to a greater level, but we're willing to compromise. We've reduced the size of that wall. We've come down from eight feet to six feet. And so we're trying to get a win-win here for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Any questions for Mr. Sellers? Mr. Newman?
Mr. Sellers, you just testified that it's an amazing amount of money that they, the Myers, will spend to put up this wall. And earlier, you testified that the intent of this project is to try to get some uniformity along Westlake Boulevard. So my question is, will the other forty-five or forty-seven or whatever other number of homes are along the property also have to spend an amazing amount of money to be in uniformity with the Myers single wall?
Yeah. A lot of that depends on the access and the slope. And we heard about, we're trying to build this wall from the property owner's side of the wall. And you have to get these sort of cranes that lift up the scaffolding and the work areas to get all the equipment up to the top. And then you have to drill down the caissons. So it is going to be very expensive just because of the topography of their house. Now, there may be other houses that are relatively flat and don't have those challenges. So the costs may vary.
You are, you are aware that this is at the top of two, maybe three rises along Westlake, starting, starting at Skelton Canyon. This is, this is a relatively flat section of Westlake relative to?
Well, I'm talking about, we're building it from the property owner's side, which means we have to get cranes to lift it from, the house is down here, the pad's down here, and here's where we're going to put the wall. So you have to get these cranes, which will have scaffolding, to reach over all that slope to get up to the work area.
I understand. I'm somewhat familiar with the area myself. And I'm saying, would you characterize the rest of the North Ranch development as flat?
All I'm saying is that every lot and parcel is different.
Yes.
And will have different challenges and the cost may be a lot less in a different parcel.
It may be. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Sellers, just for a heads up, I have one additional speaker card. So if there's something that comes up, you're welcome to come back. I'll ask you at that point. I have one additional speaker card that was submitted as a statement card. So Mr. Ken Fink asked if he could speak. So we'll entertain his, if you could just give your name and city residence and then we'll.
My name is Ken Fink and I'm a resident of the North Ranch here in Westlake. I've heard a lot of sort of negative comments made about the homeowners' association, but I, I find that they've done a wonderful job over the fifteen years that I've been a resident here. And I've looked out for my interests and the interests of those who live in my neighborhood. So I would like to take issue with some of those characterizations. Furthermore, I can't get over how much this thing is going to cost, right? It seems like it's going to be a fortune. And it's their money. And I certainly wouldn't tell anybody how to spend his or her money. But I'm thinking, God, this is the age of technology. Would a, would a, do we know for a fact that a block wall is going to stop a car coming at sixty miles an hour any better than a guardrail that's been built towards national specifications? There's no indication here of whether we do or not. Okay? Do we know if, not only the guardrail, but the soundproofing? I just heard Mr. Sellers indicate that the previous owner didn't do any soundproofing in the home. Now, if that's the case, and there's been no exhaustive study of the sound effect on the home, what technology exists out there that they could insulate their home sufficiently so that they wouldn't have to spend two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on a wall? Okay? Because there are many people in our community who might welcome the wall, but there are also many people that enjoy the vista, like people say. And that's something that's been approved by the city itself. I mean, I listened to Mr. Chang's report and it sounded like that was, you know, one of the things that attracted people to our community in the first place was the fact that, that there were split rails or, or, you know, iron. We have cast iron, you know, with the walls that Ivy goes through. I forget the name. Wrought-armed fences, right? So I'm wondering, you know, has, has there been enough work done before submitting this proposal for a wall that, that, you know, is certainly going to block the view for at least a few years before those little tiny plants grow high enough to obscure it? And I, I'll leave it to the wisdom of the Planning Commission to make its decision. And I'll thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Any questions, Speaker? Okay. Mr. Sellers, we'll give you another five minutes for a final rebuttal.
I think, again, what we're proposing, rather than having what I think would be an ugly guardrail there, put in this wall to try to keep vehicles at, at the applicant's expense, to keep vehicles out of the backyard. And I don't, I don't want to, I mean, the HOA does a good job and I'm not trying to basically say anything against the HOA. All I'm saying is that you need to look at what city's responsibility is for city streets. And that's my point. And with that.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Any final questions? Okay. That will wrap it up then. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Commissioner Tappell?
Mr. Chang, I'm just, I was making some notes. I wanted to make sure that I wrote them down correctly. In this particular area, excuse me, is, we consider the city scenic highway, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There is a note I talked here about a consistent, permanent fencing and rural community design. Is that something you were talking about that's involved with that definition is?
With scenic highway destination, in the scenic highway elements of the Thousand Oaks general plan, you provide intent and purpose, what the scenic highway means and what the, what the staff or the division of scenic highway should do for major street or thoroughfare. And with the scenic highway, we kind of pay a special attention to what's all the developments along the scenic highway, whether it be increased building setback or landscaping treatments, or the design, or the fencing they use. So for example, you see Westlake Boulevard, the landscaping they have and also the building, they're a little bit, kind of little bit recessed back than typical other street you see in Thousand Oaks. So that's kind of example I use. We provide more attention or provide more, do a closer review for the project along scenic highways. So that's one of the elements.
Okay. That helps me. Thank you.
Mr. Town, did you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to just mention that we want to keep the questions to staff to a minimum at this point because the applicant has already had their rebuttal. And so I just want to, you know, sort of warn the commission that if questions continue with staff, then, then, you know, out of fairness, the applicant should have an opportunity to address any additional new information that may come up. So just want to make everybody aware of that.
Anything else before I close the public hearing? Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open for discussion amongst the Planning Commission. Comments or a motion?
Okay.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I can see the dilemma with this because I hear the freeway noise and I was involved in the sidewalks that were put, I'm the sidewalks, the sound walls were put on the freeway twenty-three years ago. And I know the DB levels at that time. But I have to respect what the city wanted in the original when this was developed and no walls. I respect the homeowners' association, but I know the city does not enforce CCNRs. And, and while I know that they want it for the safety and for the health of their child, their asthmatic child especially, I just cannot go along and, and approve the building of this wall. And so with that, I will move to deny RPMJ 2014-70518 and the Oak Tree Permit 2015-70003. And with the findings for denial as in the package.
Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to say a few words to the Myers. I'm very sympathetic to the, both to the public safety and the noise concerns that you have. I'm part of the problem. I drive up and down Westlake Boulevard. I drive up and down Westlake Boulevard every day, and have done since 2001. I also ride my bicycle up and down Westlake Boulevard. And I know a fellow cyclist, Dr. Glenn Garvin, who was killed near Crest Haven in 2010. So I would like to see Westlake remain both a safe place. I'd like to see it less noisy. I'd like to see it safer for cyclists. But I'd also like to see it preserved as a scenic route. And having lived in other parts of the world where there are large wall places that were not so scenic, I can appreciate how beautiful that is as a main thoroughfare in our city. I'm also guided by things that Commissioners Tappell and Reynolds have said in the past. Commissioner Tappell has noted that we don't set policy here, we enforce it. And Commissioner Reynolds has noted in the past that when there are rules that exist, that they exist for us to follow them. And we're bound by those rules. And there are several rules that are in place here, starting with the 1986 requirements that there be uniform fencing along the perimeter for all the lots in this tract. We've also heard testimony tonight that the traffic levels are not significantly different from 2004 to 2014, 2012, thereabout. I don't know if they've changed significantly then. My personal experience is that they have slightly because of the 101 experience trap construction, but anecdotes are not data. So what I think, driving up and down the street, or what happened to Frankie Avalon a long time ago, doesn't really matter. When we look at the overall picture, it's... Any increase that exists is probably transient, and what we see over the long term is that the traffic is what the traffic is on Westlake. Again, though, I'd like to see some kind of solution that is not just one lot, and I'm worried about that for precedent reasons, almost for the opposite of the way what Mr. Reese has suggested, that I'm worried about, to use Mr. Sellers' word, the hodgepodge problem, that if we approve this, we're going to be approving a wall here, and a wall there, and a wall over there. And that's going to put a lot of burden on neighbors of homeowners who want individual exceptions here and there. We have rules here, we need to follow them. And while I would like to see the homeowners' association deal with this noise and safety issue in a holistic way, I can't support the application for one home. I just don't think that's the right way forward. Again, I'll close by referring to an email from Priscilla Boone. It's in the public record. I encourage everyone to read it, because it's not saying no to noise walls. It's saying, they're not inherently wrong, but let's try to approach this in a way that benefits everyone along that Boulevard, not just one homeowner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Mr. Roundtree?
I've only lived here 26 years compared to some of my fellow commissioners who have been here a lot longer. I have experienced greater traffic on Westlake Boulevard. It may not be supported by statistics, but my own experience has. I have seen it get louder. But I'm also president of a homeowners' association, which, by the way, is a thankless job, so for those of you who are doing it, thank you. And you have to try to balance the needs of everybody, including those who have special needs or special requests, because sometimes those special requests end up becoming really great ideas. However, when you look at the number of folks in the area and the precedent that's been set and the laws that have been set within the city of Thousand Oaks, I haven't heard enough information tonight to support starting that. What I'm going to suggest is maybe the homeowners' association and the applicant sit down and try to figure something out, to maybe be that first project somewhere down the road after a more thorough policy of whether it's noise reduction or safety has been addressed. And then maybe you can be that first person to write the big check, to get that wall, to get the safety, and to get the noise reduction. But to start off from here, based on the information tonight, I would not be able to support the measure.
Thank you, Commissioner... Commissioner Tappell?
My fellow commissioners have spoken very eloquently, and I'm going to have to support in their decision. You know, I... These decisions, dealing with quality of life with citizens in the community, are very tough to make when you're sitting up here. But Commissioner Newman's right, we don't really set policy. We've got the rules in front of us. Sometimes they can be bent, but they have to be bent for a greater good rather than a smaller good. I'm not so sure the safety argument for a wall is the right mitigation procedure, but I'm not a traffic engineer. I did spend 25 years in broadcasting, and I can tell you, going from 71 dB down to 67 dB is not a big push for the amount of money that you'd be putting into this. It's just not... That 25% that I read in the packet didn't make sense to me. That does not make me a professional... Excuse me, ma'am. That does not make me a professional sound engineer, but I did spend a lot of time working with sound in those areas. Simple 486 down the Boulevard concerns a precedent that it may end up looking like that, and then I feel like we'd be looking at something that may end up in Orange County or a possibility in the future. So I don't want to say reluctantly, but sadly, I'm going to support the motion, because I'm very concerned about your quality of life and what you have there.
Thank you, Commissioner Tappell. Any other comments before I weigh in here? Okay, if I could say a few words as well. I sympathize as well. My backyard is along one of the busier streets in town, and we have a lot of noise, and there's not a whole lot we can do about it. Rush hour is particularly noisy around our place. I was out there visiting your property on Saturday, drove around some of the neighborhoods, stopped, listened, and it's not this Westlake Boulevard I remember when I was first out there, 1977. At that point, Westlake Boulevard stopped at Valley Spring, and there weren't that many cars on it. You know, you didn't really have to stop and look. In fact, if I remember right, Hillcrest and Westlake Boulevard was a stop sign and not a stoplight. It was that little of traffic. So things have changed. And I think it's... What's facing us continually here is this, at this commission. In fact, I really like the term that Teriann Garcia used, is we need to be a fluid community. That's what we're facing here, is a lot of these precedents that have been set, policies, ordinances and such in our community have been set, were great 50 years ago, and we're finding some of the conflicts now. However, those policies remain in place, and our job here is to enforce those policies, and the policymakers, their city council, is the place where you can bring those issues up for changing. So I also will support the denial of the motion. And I think, just to kind of wrap it up, as Mr. Sellers was talking a lot about design standards, and we're trying to, you know, kind of look at this from a design issue and trying to set a standard for what walls should be. But I see it more as different as like, is it a wall appropriate or not? And again, my whole perspective is along with what staff was pointing out, and I'm not really going along with staff as much as staff is going along with what my thoughts were. Whether you want to call it semi-rural, or open nature, or open space, there's a certain ambiance about North Ranch that is... That was kind of crafted when that area was designed. I can remember when I was on staff, some of those issues we faced, trying to evaluate the tracks and homes, going through that process. And I just don't see this as falling in line with that. It's not in line with what was... What's in the books, nor with what was in my perspective in the intent. That's why I will have to support the motion as it's proposed, so please vote.
Chair, if I may, really quick, just to be clear for the record, I want to make sure that the motion was to deny the application, but that is, if I understand it correctly, I do want your confirmation, please, for the motion, and I do believe we all understand it, but for the record, that you are moving to...
The motion is to deny the request based on, and as I said, the findings for denial.
Right. And by that denial, you are approving staff... Adopting staff's recommendation.
Yes, adopting staff's recommendation.
Based upon the findings in the reports.
I was just trying to look and see. It doesn't... It's not a recommendation, it's an actual motion to deny.
Mr. Heer. Apologies. So a yea vote would be for denial of the application, is that correct?
Correct. If I understand the commissioner's motion, it is to deny the application, which is, in essence, approving staff's recommendation to deny this application based upon the findings.
Thank you, Mr. Heer.
Any further questions? If not, please vote.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. And with that, we will take a short 10-minute break. Okay, welcome back to the City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission for April 27th. We are now at Item 6, Committee Development Department Reports and Referrals. Mr. Towns, could you please invite us to the next session here?
Great, thank you. Chair Nichols, this is an item that comes before the planning commission every two years. It is the city's capital improvement program, and therefore, this is for fiscal years 2015 to 2016 and 2016 to 2017. And the reason that this is before you tonight is that state law does require that the planning agency for every city in the state review capital improvement programs to be sure that they are consistent with the city's general plan. So that is the purpose of this item. We are recommending that the planning commission find the proposed CIP to be consistent with the city's general plan. The emphasis here, by the way, and you've all received the salmon-colored CIP document, the emphasis is on the first two years of this five-year planning period. Those are obviously the next two fiscal years. The city operates on a two-year fiscal cycle. And those are the projects in your binder that have the photographs, the more detailed descriptions, and that is what we focus on in terms of consistency. As I'm sure you've noted, city staff for each one of these particular projects has already looked at them in the context of the general plan and identified which elements are most relevant. I've also reviewed the projects and considered those to be consistent with our general plan, both in terms of the goals and policies and the individual elements. So on behalf of the city staff, I am recommending... That you recommend to city council that the CIP is consistent with the general plan of the city and its elements. And so with that brief introduction and recommendation, I'd like to also introduce several key staff members on this document and this really significant project, and that is... Those include Mr. Jay Spurgeon, Public Works Director, Liz Perez, Facilities Manager for the city, and Brent Sakaita, the city's Budget Officer. And they are all here to answer any questions that you may have about any of the individual projects. And with that, we're all here to answer your questions.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Spurgeon, I had a couple, you know me and Public Works. On the capital improvement program for the Rancho Road sidewalk and bike lanes, and there's installation of new signal at southbound 101 off-ramp, is that a Caltrans project, or is that be a city signal?
The signal would ultimately be operated and maintained by Caltrans. That segment, for the most part, is in Caltrans right-of-way. But city is working in partnership with Caltrans, as we do in other areas, to move that project forward. In fact, we've applied for grant funding for that. We're just waiting to get that funding in place before that project could go forward.
So we'll pay for it, and then will we be reimbursed, or are you just hoping that a grant's going to cover?
We would need to secure the funding before the project moved forward.
Okay, so it's not one the Caltrans can put in. And of course, back to my SB 821 funds, that nobody calls it that anymore, for curb cuts, and the Citizens Advisory Committee to the Transportation Commission, they're the ones that usually go and review projects. Is that what the street project for the Janes Road sidewalks and curb ramps, is that part of that? Because you have a 50% match, and that's what the old SB 821 funds from the Transportation Commission.
That's correct. That is exactly the funding source that we secured for that sidewalk, for that segment of sidewalk.
Okay, so this was something that the committee then approved, what month? April, just this year, or was it last year?
Yeah, this is from the last round of funding. And so that one is... And we have matching funds through, I think, developer fees.
Okay. And my last thing is something that I voted against and really received a lot of negative remarks from the city council about, and I don't think anyone else was on the planning commission when it happened, and Mr. Towns knows what it is. The solar at the Newbury Park Library, because we were in a hurry, the city was in a hurry because we're federal funds available to put in carports. And during that hearing, it was no, no, they can't go on the roof. The roof is not structurally sound enough to put those solar panels on the roof. Now, all of a sudden, I see it in here, and I'm going to take this page out, and I'm going to send it to Assemblywoman Irwin, because I know she was very upset that our planning commission nixed that. And I'm surprised... I'm thrilled to see it in here, but I'm really surprised that it can be done now. So during the new roofing project, is it going to be made structurally...
Structurally sound, yes. That's what we're going to do. So now that it's time to redo the roof, we're going to have to go in and look at the roof structure at the same time, so it makes it more financially feasible to do it all at the same time. We just wanted to do the parking lot because there's much more area, and so the payback would have been better to put more panels at the time. But now incorporating it makes sense to incorporate it in this project. You can't see them, it has a high parapet, but it has a nice, open roof up top, so it's going to be a really great project.
Well, I think that after we voted against it and then other projects... I think we were all very sorry that we did it that night, that I think our now mayor voted in support of it, but the rest of us went no, no, no. So, you know. But anyway, I was really pleased to see in here that it's going to be done, and I'll make sure that our Assemblywoman knows it's happening.
Very good.
That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Roundtree?
I have a question for Mrs. Spurgeon. This has to do with Westlake Boulevard and the proposed sidewalk, which I've read about in here. It's kind of a two-part question. Can you tell us a little bit about how we're going to meander, and is that city property or not? And the second piece has to do with safety. So let's just start with the first part of the question, then I'll come back to you. Is that city property? Whose property is it? Where's the money coming from? And then ultimately, is it going to be completed when it's suggested to be completed?
Westlake Boulevard, south of the 101 freeway, is, in fact, State Route 23, so it is a Caltrans right-of-way roadway. But again, as I mentioned earlier, the city has partnered with Caltrans to move forward a number of projects that are in Caltrans right-of-way. So this is another one. This is a sidewalk to... That we're proposing to construct on both sides in different segments where there's no sidewalk currently. And we did... We have received grant funding that will pay for the majority of this project.
Between now and the time it's actually put under construction, I drive down that street multiple times a day, and between the bike lane and then the pedestrians who for some reason don't walk on the sidewalk, they walk in the bike lane opposite direction. And as I'm driving to work, it's a safety issue. And I'm wondering, is there anything that can be done to help educate some of the folks who are walking in the bike lane? Because then what happens, the bicyclists have to swerve around the pedestrians who shouldn't be there in the first place, and then the bicyclists come into the car area. Is there something the city can do to help, I won't say police the area, but I've had a couple of near misses with bicyclists who just had to swerve to miss people who are walking in a bike lane?
Where sidewalks exist, pedestrians, of course, should be using the sidewalk and not riding, and not walking or running or strolling out in the actual roadway, even if it's in a bike lane. So that's correct. That's where they should be. What can the city do? Certainly, we can, you know, reach out to our law enforcement partners, whether it be Thousand Oaks Police Department or the California Highway Patrol, to, you know, to help enforce and patrol those areas. help enforce and patrol those areas. The locations where this new sidewalk would go currently, where there isn't any, and so of course pedestrians are sort of forced to walk out in the bike lane area. So I think the majority of people, if they have a choice, will use the sidewalk, notwithstanding certainly your experience, and I think others. I mean, I've seen that as well.
Thank you. That's all the questions. Mr. Trappell.
Hi, good evening. And just a quick question. I often get asked about the sidewalks that would be put in along Los Feliz Drive. And I saw some activity there a couple of months back, but when I went through this, I didn't see that project on here at all. Is that still on the table?
It is. And that project began earlier this year, actually started last year. Unfortunately, we had some challenges with the contractor, and we parted ways. So the project was started, and maybe about 20% was completed. And so now we're sort of regrouping, and we have to bid it out, we have to go out and bid it again. It should be shown as a carryover. In fact, it is a project that's in the streets section of the book, if you want to look at, refer to page 16. That's where, that's the project that I think you're referring to. So that will complete that project. That is Los Feliz between Skyline and Canal School Road.
And I'm sorry, where was that? Did I miss it?
Page 16.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's a Safe Routes to School funded project.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Spurgeon, I appreciate that this is a, many of the projects described here are ongoing, and I'm sure this report took quite a while to put together. Just a general question about the water section, namely, does the current water shortage have any impact, plus or minus, in terms of expenditure or in scope for any of the projects in that section?
It does. And there are projects in the Water Fund, Proposed Budget, that do address the drought in certain ways, both in conservation and as well as in developing new water supplies, local water supplies. For the most part, our Water Fund as well as our wastewater fund, well, actually, the majority of this capital improvement plan is driven by maintaining our aging infrastructure. You know, as a developed city, almost fully developed city and an aging community, that's our challenge going forward. So, and specifically in the Water Fund, the City Council had approved water rates about a year and a half ago that included about a $3 million contribution to ongoing capital maintenance and improvements to maintain the assets. So the Water and wastewater funds especially are in very good shape, and that's because there's the resources needed. And we can do that and still have relatively low rates, comparatively speaking, to some of our local agencies. In terms of developing new water supplies, which is certainly a response to the drought, there's a couple of projects I'll just mention briefly. One is, we're partnering with City of Camarillo to develop a desalting treatment plant that would clean up or utilize otherwise non-potable groundwater in the north Camarillo area. This is groundwater that's gotten salty over time and is essentially unusable for potable use now. So this desalter would make use of that and provide a local supply that otherwise wouldn't, we wouldn't have. So in partnership with them, we would be able to, through kind of a wheeling arrangement, get the benefit of that local supply. And a second is our own Canal Valley groundwater basin, which, of course, in the early years of Thousand Oaks, that's what sustained development until imported water arrived in the mid to late 60s. There were hundreds of wells that kind of poked all over the valley. So we're, and since then, essentially, all but maybe one well at the golf course have, they've all been deactivated and destroyed. So we're finishing up a study, looking at opportunities to drill new wells or reactivate old wells and make use of that resource, and that's our own local resource. So maybe we'll help with about 10% of our water needs, but still, that's 10%. That's local. We have control of it. We don't have to worry about shortages or rising imported water costs. So those are a couple of things I could highlight in the Water Fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I've got a few here. I actually forwarded mine to Mr. Towne this morning, and I'm just going to go down my list, and I'll see who can help me with this. On page eight, towards the bottom, it talks about the Lynn Road Sound Wall Phase 1 Construction Holding Account. It shows a million dollars. I just was curious as to how a holding account works. Is this just a savings account that you just set aside and you hope nobody remembers it's there till you need it? How does that work?
When the money was received from the developers, what we did was we put it into an account. And through this account, what we've done is we've set aside money. We've been asked by council to set aside money for the sound wall. So we put the million dollars into basically a reserve, so it's part of the fund, but it's set aside so that when time comes to expend those funds, we'll have it available.
So would it be considered an encumbered account, where it's actually got a tag on it?
It's not encumbered in the terms of an accounting encumbrance, like a purchase order and so forth. It's more of an accounting type of reserve. So we have it basically set aside in the fund so that it's not spent on other types of allocations.
And just curious as to how this is used. So would council perhaps do this over a period of years and hope that at some point they've accumulated enough that now they can move forward with the project?
Well, what happened was is, I believe, we started collecting money from developers in the early 90s. And so we've set aside monies. And basically, what we're doing is, we're going to use that to pay for construction based on what council directs us to do.
I see. Okay. All right. Let's see. On page nine, one of the projects that never ends, Herb's Road, although I drove down today, and it looks like we're getting really close. I see some fresh pavement on there. I see an additional 1.6, almost 1.7 million dollars for the coming fiscal year. So I'm just curious, it seems like we're so close. What is it that's remaining that's going to cost another 1.7 million dollars?
What you're seeing is the carryover from this current fiscal year budget into the next fiscal year. And that's because by the time we're done paying all the bills and getting maybe the landscaping done, although all that work should be done by the end of May. And yes, we're paving today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, and the road will be nice and new and smooth, and get the striping done next week. So you're absolutely right. It's almost done, and it has been a long road. But what you're seeing here is what's called a carryover, and that's just funds that are encumbered that may not be fully expended by the end of this fiscal year, which is June 30, because there may be some fall, you know, some final payments and whatnot to the contractor. So it's an accounting exercise there.
Okay. So when we do see the pavement laid and the striping next week, is that done, or is there still some remedial work yet to be completed?
There will be some landscaping that's installed. Striping and signage kind of go together. And then really, it's just a matter of kind of final pickup items. So, yeah, we're just about there.
Finally. Okay. Glad to hear it. On page 14, talks about widening of the road and bike lanes. I just was curious, stopping at Caye Contento, it doesn't give folks a whole lot of options on where to go at that point. Is this, and I know Norwegian grade is not really bike-friendly, but my question is, is there intentions to make it more bike-friendly, or is this going to be the end of that project right there, Caye Contento?
The project you're referring to is a new sidewalk and bike lanes on Moore Park Road north of Olson Road, between Olson Road and the top of the Norwegian grade. There's a, essentially, that sidewalk would connect into the YMCA up there, and it would not go any further. Norwegian grade, as you know, a few years ago, was reconstructed, and we shut it down for a couple of months and actually dug up the entire road and made it new. And widening that road is a huge challenge and essentially just cost prohibitive because of the slope, the steep slopes on both sides. That's, so you won't, certainly not in this five-year plan, there's no projects being put forth to do any further work on the Norwegian grade.
Okay, so this will be basically the northern terminus of bike lanes there for this part of town, then?
Correct.
Although I did see elsewhere, I don't remember what page it was, that the Reed Road bicycle connector through the Olson Lift Station, that's, I guess, would be the alternate route if you wanted to go from Thousand Oaks to Moore Park, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. Then on page 16, referring to Los Feliz Road, it's curious about the section of Los Feliz that is north of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, that, you know, right there by the, well, it used to be Arco Station, I don't know if it still is, that little stretch there where it kind of takes the elevation grade there. There's room for, well, not room, there's need for sidewalks there. Is that planned or proposed at some point? Because I didn't see it in this particular capital plan.
That's correct. There is the need for sidewalks there. It's sort of a patchwork through there. As development has come in, sidewalks have been put in by the developers. So this is the stretch, of course, between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Canal School Road. So we're, this project that's in here is east of there. That is a section that is on our list. We need to secure funding for that. We're, and we're pursuing that. There's a, sort of a general citywide sidewalk priority list that we maintain, and so it's really not in the capital budget, segment by segment. When we, typically what happens when we secure funding, in this case, likely it would be Safe Routes to School funding again in a future cycle. And then, once we have that funding, then of course we'll create a project, put it in, put it in the book in the future.
Okay. And a follow-up on Mr. Roundtree's comment on Westlake Boulevard, page 20, the sidewalk there, I noticed trees were going to be removed, but I was questioning whether trees were going to be replaced as part of that project?
Well, the first thing, we're going to do everything we can to minimize the number of trees that do have to be removed. We're just getting into the project design now, and we will be spending a lot of time talking with folks out there, the HOAs and other residents of the Westlake area. We may need to, and we likely will, need to design this new sidewalk to meander around many of the existing mature trees, which would require easements on either HOA property or other private property. So to the extent that we have to remove any trees, certainly they would be replanted. There'd be a mitigation plan for that.
So it's not a full-scale removal of all the sycamores, then? It's on as-needed basis?
The sycamores, no, we're not planning to take any of the sycamores out.
Okay. And to tap into Mr. Roundtree's comment about pedestrians in the street, I have to confess, I'm one of those, when we walk around the lake going down Westlake Boulevard, either you're faced with no sidewalk on one side of the street, or the other side has got the ripples from the rubber in there, and if you're running, you seem to catch your toes all the time, so you end up in the street where it's nice and smooth.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest using the sidewalk. That's why these people were hard to put on sidewalks. Please obey the law.
On page 23, Thousand Oaks Boulevard Streetscape, will that project proceed if grant funds are not secured?
The Thousand Oaks Boulevard, this project ties in with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan. And as you heard recently, the City Council has appointed an ad hoc committee to start looking at the plan and, you know, getting something going, basically, along there. And, you know, the public improvements and what this project represents is a segment where we can do some of the streetscape improvements that are included in the specific plan, such as bulbouts and other pedestrian-friendly type improvements, maybe putting medians where there aren't any street furniture. And some of that kind of start beautifying and making the Boulevard more pedestrian-friendly. So that's the goal of this. How it will be funded is, I think, yet to be determined. Right now, it's shown, it's proposed to be funded through the General Fund, but I think that you're correct. We would need to secure some other funding source for this to go forward. So this is kind of a wait-and-see project.
Okay. Okay.
I think that should be curb extensions.
Yeah, just to augment Mr. Spurgeon's comments, the Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan identified nine different, basically enhanced intersections with, you know, these bulbouts, as we call them, or curb extensions, that basically provide a more pedestrian-friendly environment and different hardscape treatments. But there was no specific implementation plan nor funding source identified in the Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan to accomplish these street improvements. And so with this project, the city is basically getting it into the books, so to speak, as a project that we think is worthwhile. Funding, as Mr. Spurgeon mentioned, still has to be finalized, but this is where the city taking a, sort of taking a step forward to try to make some of these improvements where heretofore they were not specifically funded.
Thank you. And on page 28, regarding the Lynn Road Sound Wall Phase 2, says the cost is subject to possible payment from Dos Vientos developers. Is that just something that's out there somewhere? We just don't know?
Let me clarify, this particular project, the Dos Vientos Master Plan project, there were development agreements between the city and the two developers, two main developers out there. There was funding that was set aside for a number of purposes, one of which was, actually, this is an environmental mitigation requirement that there be sound studies, or sound study done at the conclusion of the Dos Vientos development. That is when all of the possible housing units are constructed. So we're almost there. The last major tract, tract 5200, off of Rancho Dos Vientos Boulevard, I believe is fully occupied, but there's still a couple of handfuls of vacant lots that still need to be developed. When those are done, then as part of, again, part of the master development agreement and the original EIR, the city would do a sound study along Lynn Road. This would be west of Reno Road, and that would determine the properties that are eligible, or that would be eligible for sound wall mitigation. So as part of the developers' original funding of these various things through the development agreement, there is a million dollars, there's over a million dollars, in an account, as Brent mentioned, waiting for this final sound study to be funded and a, potentially, a sound wall constructed.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let's see. On page 51, it's a Thousand Oaks Transit Bus Purchase. It mentions a million dollars in approved grant funding. I was curious as to what is the source of that funding?
That is Federal Transit Administration grant funding.
Okay. And on page 84... And on page 84, the Freeway Reservoir Access Road, I was curious if there was consideration given to trail access along this route?
Maybe I could answer that one, and the short answer is yes. The acquisition of the parcels for that road was done in partnership with Public Works and also the Caneo Open Space Conservation Agency in an effort in part to not only secure access to the water tank, but also potentially to provide for public trail access. There is one parcel, however, which is privately owned, over which the city would still need to acquire a trail easement, and so that is still a missing link in that section. However, it is the city's intent to provide trail access and it is identified on our trail maps.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. It's one of my popular sites out there. On page 140, this is parking structure improvements, talking about solar panels. I notice up in the description, it doesn't talk about solar panels, but down operations impact, there is reference to solar panels. So my question was, are there or aren't there solar panels?
Well, there were solar panels in the project and when we were talking about Newbury Park Library, this was five, six years ago, we were looking at all the sites and we actually had planned to put solar panels here at Civic Arts Plaza. And the Capitol Facilities, Council Capitol Facilities Committee at the time was a little concerned of aesthetics. And also there's a financial aspect to the project. This property uses so much electricity with the theaters and all the buildings that the payback is very long-term when you have to pay for it yourself. And they're really, that's why all the money ended up getting put into the Hillcrest project, which is quite successful. But if we have to fund it all ourselves, it is quite costly. So at this time, because of the finances and what we, the direction we were previously given, it was taken out. And I apologize, it looks like we missed taking it out on operations. But the way the project currently stands is funded, that solar is not considered. Now, if Planning Commission wanted to, you know, voice their approval of such a thing with aesthetics, I'm sure we could go re-discuss that with the council committee and see if they want to relook at that and put it back into the project.
It just seems to me with all the projects we've seen recently where solar is just the go-to option, I mean, we saw the, very many of the projects at our last commission meeting, time and again, I mean, it just seems if this is the type of work we're doing, now is the time. And I would certainly encourage that to be included in this type of a project. Gosh, we would be the odd person out with everybody else in the city doing this. Oaks Mall is leading it, all the development projects. It seems like we just need to bite the bullet and push this forward.
Okay. We'll take that back to, take it back to the council committee.
I mean, that's just me. Anyone else want to speak up, you certainly can, but...
Well, my only concern on that is the resource for funding on that. And if they've already vetted that, I mean, ideally it would be a great thing to do. But does that change if this is added? Do we have to add that in if this was recommended and approved at the council?
I think it's within the purview of the commission to, and I think we're talking about page 140 of the CIP, to make a recommendation that solar be evaluated, I mean, as part of that project. Obviously, you don't have the details in front of you right now to fully understand what that would entail, but if you wanted to add that to your motion, just for, as a recommendation that the council explore that, again, I think that's certainly appropriate.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last one on the page, I have one more that's not on one of the pages here. Page 167, the Duesenberg Sidewalk, well, actually, my question was, is there going to be sidewalk on Duesenberg? Because I know alongside the Chevrolet dealer now, there is no sidewalk there. And is there going to be a sidewalk proposed either through the auto mall portion of it or through this program?
This particular location in the CIP is the Auto Mall Street Parking Improvements Project. And as part of that, yes, sidewalks will be included in that segment.
And will that include along Duesenberg then?
Yes.
Okay. Because I didn't see it in the map.
Yeah, that's the only, really, that's the only stretch where there are no sidewalks in the auto mall.
Yes. Okay.
Adjacent to the dealerships.
Okay. And then just another comment of mine, thinking of sidewalks, over at the Oaks Mall, there's a bus stop at the end of the parking lot where the farmer's market is often held. And there are no sidewalks that lead to the bus stop. And it seems like it would be a logical place to put sidewalks if you're trying to get people from streets to a bus stop. Is there any consideration? I don't know where that is on your list of things to do, but it seems like that would be a logical one to get people to the bus.
So noted.
Is that city property or is that Oaks Mall property? Or is it cooperative?
There, see, some of that is, some of those are private streets. And then, of course, west Thousand Oaks Boulevard is a city street, but up to, what is that, Marin that comes down there? And Marin is a city street. So the section I think you're talking about would be city streets. Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Okay. That was my review. Unless I stirred some more interest. Any other questions, comments otherwise? Okay. Then I guess this is an item that does need a motion then for recommendation approval?
Correct. This is an action item. So we will need a motion and a vote. And if somebody would like to include the reference to page 140, but to be more specific to the capital improvement project 5090, which is the parking structure improvements.
Any discussion or motion? Commissioner Newman?
See if I get the terminology right here. So I move that we recommend the city capital improvement program for FY 2015, 2016, and 2016, 2017, along with a recommendation that solar energy be considered for parking structure improvement CI 5090.
Correct. And just to clarify, that the CIP as presented is consistent with the Thousand Oaks general plan?
And that this CIP is consistent with the city's general plan.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay. Please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Okay. Thank you, staff, for waiting out for us this evening and giving us those thorough explanations. Okay. Let me get the next item here. Mr. Town, I guess 7B would be next, Planning Commission tentative hearing agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may have noticed, we changed the Planning Commission tentative agenda a bit and we had initially planned on the capital improvement program going to you at your May 11th meeting, but due to another case which had to be moved, your next meeting on May 11th is canceled and your next planned hearing date is, or meeting date, I should say, is June 8th. At this time, we have one case, as you can see on the tentative agenda, but we expect to have actually three more cases that night. So you should have four cases to consider. And then on to June 22nd, when we're anticipating the Oakmont Assisted Living Project, that's at the current location of the Young Set Club at Los Padres and Rolling Oaks Drive. And then just looking forward to city council items, first of all, tomorrow night, the city council will actually be considering, or holding, I should say, a study session on the capital improvement program that you just considered tonight for consistency. So they'll be doing that tomorrow night. And then a couple other cases, which you can see on page 114 of your packet, the Caneo Valley Unified School District property will be going to city council for their review on May 12th. And the council, as I'm sure you know, held a public hearing on April 14th on the oak and landmark tree ordinance changes, and they have directed staff to evaluate a number of other aspects of the oak tree ordinance, and that's what we have begun doing. And so with that, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Next is minutes and resolutions.
Move approval of the minutes of the April 13th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting and the resolutions of April 13th, 2015.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Any discussions, comments? If not, please vote.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Thank you. And for any AB 1234 reports, any commissioners out there? Okay. Thank you. Commission comments? Anybody have any comments for this evening? Mr. Trappell?
Yeah, just one thing. Staff kind of got out of here quick after we were looking at the CIP, but if you could let them know that we think you guys did an incredible job putting that together. It really is amazing, you know? And there's not many words in it, you know, one page at a time. So if you could send our best wishes.
Thank you, Commissioner Trappell. Any other comments?
I just want to make note, I actually attended the Arbor Earth Day event on Saturday, April 18th, which was well-attended. It was a little warm, but not too hot. A good crowd out there. I was able to sit in on a gray water presentation, learned a little bit about that. And a lot of fascinating options out there that, you know, just to see how things have evolved over the last 10 or 20 years is amazing as far as new technology for how you can save water, how you can, you know, save energy. It's incredible what's out there. Also saw Assembly Member Fran Pavly, who is promoting the Wildlife Corridor in Agura. And question for you, Mr. Town, is I also saw Supervisor Linda Parks there, trying to gain a little momentum for the next step of the SOAR, Save Our Open Space and Agriculture Resources. And presuming that moves forward, will we get some type of presentation or how that might affect us in the city if that effect does take root in some regard?
Yes. There's a county-level proposal to basically extend some of the SOAR initiatives. As the commission is aware, there are SOAR initiatives really throughout the county. Our SOAR initiative, AKA Curb, our city urban restriction boundary line expires in 2026. And so ours is further out than some, but some are coming up, I believe, within the next five years. And so there's an effort now to potentially extend all of those SOAR measures. That's according to the website for this effort. And so that's what you saw. There's an effort already underway to begin sort of the process of soliciting public support to do just that. And, you know, as the commission, I think, is also aware, the SOAR/Curb issue is really something that helps to contain cities within their current boundaries. It has basically strict standards for any extension of services outside of the city's current planning area boundaries, which is the city's vision of where its ultimate boundaries will be. And so this helps to, the SOAR initiatives help to preserve agricultural land, natural open space, green belts, et cetera. So that's where that movement is focused.
Other comments, questions? Okay. If not, then that concludes the April 27th edition of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. And we will adjourn to 6:30 PM on June the 8th, 2015. Good night.